Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Thank you so much for joining us. We're so pleased to have members of our community here with us tonight. It is Thursday, May 5th, 2022, and it's my pleasure to make a motion for the board to return to public session. If I could please have a second. Thank you, Ilana. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, seven zero. Thank you. And would everybody please join us as is our custom for the Pledge of Allegiance?
We salute the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful. Again, thank you and welcome. Thank you for joining us. We're very much looking forward to our presentations this evening. We are looking forward to hearing from our Technology Director, Chris Nelson, who has joined us to provide an update on our technology plan as we look to the future and to an opportunity to adopt a revised plan, perhaps this summer. We're looking forward to yet another opportunity to review the Board of Education's proposed budget to the community. This is our required mandatory budget hearing. And we're very much looking forward to welcoming and hearing from our candidates for the Board of Education upcoming election. Before we turn our attention to those presentations, we're going to just take a brief moment for some updates and announcements. And tonight, actually with the board's permission, I'm going to just ask to go slightly out of order and invite Andrew to please start our meeting and say a few words.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you very much, Marjorie. Until a couple of hours ago, I was looking forward to coming tonight and presenting a number of really joyful events of which we're enormously proud in the district. And I will still talk about those things because we're still proud of and feel joy about those events. However, a few hours ago today, we learned in our middle school of some truly unconscionable and awful racist graffiti that was discovered in a bathroom in the middle school. I do want to credit the student who immediately upon finding that reported it to the school principal. Mr. Stryadowitz immediately notified the police, both local and state police came to the school and will begin to have begun an investigation. Principal Stryadowitz spoke with all the students before the end of the school day to appropriately condemn this behavior and let everyone know our complete lack of tolerance for this kind of behavior. And he has then sent a letter out to the middle school community and I have since sent his letter and forwarded it to the entire school community along with my own thoughts on the matter. It saddens us deeply and should set us back on our heels when we hear of something like this. We know that we are working ever in the direction of greater inclusion and better, more understanding and compassion. We've been doing that work for a number of years and an incident like this points out to us absolutely clearly how much more work we have to do. We happened to have a meeting of our ERJC yesterday, and I said in that meeting that we are always humble in the face of this work. Never thinking that we're done, never thinking that the work is perfect, never wanting to brag about the work we do. We simply talk about the work that we do and we acknowledge and recognize that sadly there's hate in the world, in the world around us, and that that comes into our schools despite our best efforts. And we will continue. Already today, Principal Stryadowitz is thinking about some steps to take to more closely monitor movement around the school and movement into the bathrooms. And right away, that causes us to reflect on the kinds of experiences we want to create for all of our students, the kinds of warm and welcoming environments that we want to create. And it saddens us to think we're going to have to take some steps in a different direction. And at the same time, we recognize the necessity of doing that. So it's important that our entire community reflect on this moment. This is not, as I wrote just a little while ago, the community. This is work that schools absolutely take on. And as I said, we take it on with humility. And we know that if we're doing it alone, we're not going to be successful in this work because this is a community's work, a country's work, a world's work to keep moving forward, to try always to reduce hate, to increase compassion and love. And that's the work in which we're engaged. So we will continue. We will absolutely continue. We will redouble our efforts to the extent that we can. And we'll keep moving forward. Working to continue to maintain the hopeful and the joyful environment for our students that we know predominantly is what encourages good and compassionate behavior for all of them. Which leads me to still want to speak about those other events because we do have things, many things to be proud of. This past weekend, we had a phenomenal J-Fest here at John Jay High School that started off with a really great pep rally in the high school gym and was followed in the afternoon by a unified basketball game that was heartwarming and testament to the kind of work we want to be doing as a school district. I want to say thanks to the many, many parent volunteers, the boosters who helped to put that event together and the many, many staff who contribute to an event like that. And then there are other joyful events upcoming, you know, more performances to come next week at Increase Miller and at our other schools. And last week, we had our Learning Cafe on the topic of inclusion. My thanks to all in the community who joined. I couldn't be there. My thanks to Mary and Neil for facilitating that evening. From everything I've heard, the conversations were thoughtful, appreciative of all the staff and community members who could be there and engaging around topics that, again, from today's events, we know are complex and will challenge us for a long time to come. But we remain committed to working ever, ever forward. So a few other thoughts on other topics. This, all this week, we've been presenting our Budget Roadshows. You're going to hear the budget presentation again in just a little while. My thanks to all of our PTOs for supporting those events. We'll continue again next week with a presentation for our Septo PTO as well as one at KES. I think Septo is on Tuesday and KES is on Wednesday evening. Thanks in advance to those PTOs for hosting us. I want to make mention of the fact that this is Teacher Appreciation Week around the country as well as here at Katona-Louisburg. Again, I have to say thank you to our PTOs who I know are really doing a phenomenal job of expressing their appreciation for our teachers. We want to, at the same time, express our credible appreciation for the work that our teachers do and have been doing through really trying times, and they continue to be unbelievably dedicated and caring and supportive towards all of their students. And next week is School Nurse Appreciation Week. So since we won't be together next week, I want to take a moment now to this group of people who have been so enormously dedicated and continue to be. As sadly, COVID numbers have been higher of late. They have been busier as a result of late. So we want to thank them also for their always incredibly diligent and dedicated work on behalf of all students and staff. And I think, Marjorie, that is the end of my comment for tonight.
Thank you, Andrew. We really appreciate your words and your emphasis on our humility in the face of this work and our sense of urgency around this work. And thank you also for the celebratory words about many of the joyous events and thanking our volunteers, our teachers, our staff. I know that my board colleagues in just a moment are well prepared to underscore your comments and sentiments and perhaps to even say some words about other goings on around the community. But first, I would like to invite Abigail to please share with us her student board report if you're ready. Thank you.
So at Campus Congress, the new executive board was selected and they successfully led our last meeting on April 20th. And overall, we've had a very successful year as we made many changes and recently assisted in the planning of J-Fest. At the high school, the science research symposium was held on April 22nd. The jazz and band concerts were April 25th, and the composition showcase was April 28th. J-Fest was held April 29th, so students had a shortened day and went to the pep rally in the gym at 11:30 where dance team, a cappella groups, and the piece from the Spring Musical were performed. Sports teams could also introduce their seniors and their upcoming games. Following the pep rally, students could go outside, do temporary tattoos, draw with chalk, listen to students sing, participate in relay races, and much more. The day ended with a senior versus staff kickball game where unfortunately the staff won. Overall, J-Fest was a huge success and will hopefully become a tradition at John Jay. May 2nd through 13th, there are AP exams. The orchestra and vocal jazz concert was May 3rd. And Earthrise Sustainability Club sold 455 trees to offset the school's paper use. And this is the seniors' last week of classes before we begin our internships. At the middle school, Rock the Halls was held on April 22nd to raise money for Arts Alive. The state math test was held April 26th through 28th. The fifth grade parent orientation was held on April 22nd or 27th. And then Miss Witruba's science class hiked around campus on Earth Day to learn about wind and solar lights. At Meadow Pond, the Science Fair was held April 21st. Recycling Matters Club collected uneaten carrots and brought them to Rising Star Horse Rescue. At Katona Elementary, KES Kindness Day was April 23rd, and students enjoyed playing disco aerobic bowling in their gym classes. And lastly, at Increase Miller, students planted peas and beans on Earth Day, and kindergarteners had a reading marathon where they read for 26 minutes, just like the 26 miles in a marathon.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for the update and overview of events going on around every school building and in honor of Earth Day. And speaking of internships, I imagine you must be preparing to head out on your own internship. Would you mind sharing with us what you'll be doing?
Yes. So I'm interning at Really Art Studio. So I'll help out with like kids' art classes and just work around the studio. And then I also have friends interning at all the schools in the districts. They're also working at companies like in finance. And I even know someone who will be working on wells. So you can really do whatever you want.
That's really great. Thank you so much for sharing that. Did anybody else have a comment or question for Abigail before we move on? Next item on our agenda technically is board subcommittees, but why don't we stick with board announcements for the time being and then go to subcommittee reports? Did board members have other announcements they wanted to share? Please, Liz.
I just wanted to reiterate Andrew's comments about the Unified Basketball Game. It was pure joy. It was so fantastic to see so many students there. And it was just, you know, it's a great day when you can root for both teams. And you can see such joy in everybody in that gym. Last joy, but also important, I've been attending the Budget Roadshow, which has been, it's been great to get in the schools and talk to people about the budgets and priorities. And then just one last thing, I do want to mention that the Katona Elementary School PTO fundraiser Dancing Under the Stars is on Saturday. I am unaware if there are tickets remaining, but it looks like an amazing event, the John Jay homestead.
Thank you. Thank you, Liz. Other announcements.
Julia. I just wanted to echo Andrew's sentiment about J-Fest weekend and acknowledge all of the parent volunteers, our student team volunteers who supported their peers, our performance groups that were part of the pep rally, and really the boosters just did an amazing job of rethinking J-Fest this year after the kids had been so isolated to really make it an opportunity for kids to get together, to support each other, to be with their peers. And it was really obvious that that meant a lot to the kids. So thank you very much to everyone for that. And also Andrew mentioned the Science Symposium, which was really quite impressive. And it's just amazing to hear the type of work our students are doing. And, you know, thank you to all of our staff. And at every level, these children clearly were prepared to get to the point that they're yet through great science education throughout their career. And, you know, I think they're really just enjoying it. It was so nice to see how passionate they felt about the work they were doing and seeing some of the younger students who are just starting the process talk about their initial exploration and what they hope to study. It was really exciting to see them passionate about the work that they're doing. So thank you to everyone for those two events. Were great.
Wonderful. Thank you, Julia.
Marjorie, I had a couple of things. I can't help but feel like the disco aerobic bowling was probably the most fun event, and I think we all missed it. So perhaps next time we can get some warning on that one. I went over to the middle school for Rock the Halls on the 22nd of April, and it was a blast. I don't know if any of you guys got to go there, but it was very dark and it was very, very packed and it was a raucous crowd. Jesse Weiss would just did an amazing job with his band. There were 45 students from both the middle school and the high school because of COVID. They weren't able to hold it for the last couple of years. So some high school kids came back. And it was just such a rocking time. It was really great. I had such a fun time and the community was there in full force and it was standing room only. Literally, there was no place to sit. It was great. The next day, I went over to the Earthrise where they were, thanks for letting everybody know, Abigail. They pre-sold about 450 trees to offset their paper, but it really is just a great way for the students to start to think about sustainability and to think about their carbon imprint. Jill Hurstfeld ran it and just did an amazing job. There was also a young man there named Austin Omen that I spent quite a bit of time talking to. He's a representative on the town board. He's a student rep on the town board. And he was there supporting the town's food scrap recycling program. And I really just thought he was such an articulate young man. He's engaged with the town. It's just so warming to see that even at the student level, we have such a good relationship with our town. So two wonderful events. It does feel a little bit dampened by the news today at the middle school. I can only echo Andrew's words that we need to redouble our efforts and condemn the behavior. And I really hope that we can find out who's responsible and get them the help that they need. And, you know, it just, it sort of put a damper, I think, on the whole evening. So we really need to continue our work and redouble our work in that regard. But otherwise, yeah, it's been quite a hectic couple of weeks as we near the end of the school year, I suppose.
Yes. Thank you, Rory. Thank you. Well said. Any other comments or board announcements before we move on? I'll just provide a brief update regarding our Unified Basketball Team, although I love the sentiment that you articulated about rooting for both teams. Nevertheless, we are undefeated. Picture today and in a way game where our students are traveling to other districts and their season calendar is available from the athletics website and from community members who maybe haven't had a chance to support the team, you know, please, please check it out. Please do. If there are no further board announcements, then we can turn to subcommittee reports briefly. This is item 7.01. I wasn't sure, is there anything new from audit? No. Okay. Thank you. Facilities.
The facilities committee met on Wednesday, which is yesterday. It's been a long week already. And we continue our discussion of the needs of our buildings with focus on our elementary schools. Yesterday, the work continues, and I think we're making good progress.
Thank you, Liz. More to come. Parent Council, have you met since?
We haven't had a meeting. We were meeting tomorrow morning.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Policy Committee.
Do we have that policy as a first read?
No, next, next time.
Next week. Okay. So we are working on a policy that will have a first read next time.
Great. Thank you. Our Sustainability Committee is meeting tomorrow. We did have one meeting between the last meeting and this meeting where we started to talk about the impact of some legislation that didn't exist when our charter or board policy was drafted almost 10 years ago. And we're talking about how that might change our approach to the policy prospectively. And I imagine we'll continue that conversation tomorrow. And then with regard to Westchester Putnam County School Board Association, it's also that time of year that we just recently voted on the budget for next year and the slate of officers, and that will be provided to Boards of Education to be voted on at our next meeting. So we can be on the lookout for that. And I think that's it. And that brings us finally to our opportunity for our first presentation, which we're looking forward to.
There is a quick update on finance, maybe?
I'm so sorry, Rory, that I skipped finance. Thank you.
No problem at all. So the Finance Committee met last Monday. The meeting had been moved, so maybe that's why you didn't think it through. You didn't think of it. There are two charges to the Finance Committee this year. One of them is to use the normal analysis using the Commissioner's report to evaluate future expenditures or potential future expenditures and to find areas where there may be specific volatility across certain expense line items. And the second charge was to look at the peer reports so that we're comparing our expense line items to peer districts. On the first one, we're making very, very good progress, so much so actually that I think we have a whole new tool that we think will more accurately provide potential future volatility to us. We've gotten some really stellar input from a number of community members who are very knowledgeable in this space. It's really wonderful to work with them. However, all of that good work has kind of put us behind track a little bit, and we're now contemplating whether we'll even make it to our second charge or not. So I'm kind of preparing you for our June presentation. To the extent that we get to the peer report, it might be a little bit light, but the first piece of it will be really thorough.
Okay. That's really exciting. Thank you for letting us know. That's great. Thank you to the Finance Committee, Rory. Thank you. Okay. Does that cover us for board subcommittees? Great. Okay. Thank you. Then without further ado, let's move on to presentations and discussions. I think we're at 9.01. And welcome, Chris Nelson. Thanks for joining us.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
It's always a pleasure to give you an update in terms of the workings of the Technology Department and the investments in technology across the district. Just as a footnote, those of you that are following on, Rangers are still tied with Pittsburgh. So hopefully I'll get to see the rest of the game tonight.
Thank you.
So tonight's an opportunity for us to kind of, you know, step away from the day-to-day activities of the Technology Department. Take a larger view in terms of the role of technology throughout the district and at the same time, give the board an opportunity to give us some input in terms of where technology can advance and where we can do a better job in terms of meeting the needs of other goals throughout the district. So this is an ongoing process that the state asks us to complete every three years. The last presentation in this format was back in the spring of 2018. Sorry, I had to shake off the dust on that one. So that was more than three years ago because the state kind of gave us a pause year because of the pandemic and stuff. So it was unfair of them to kind of ask us to go through that process where we were working through so many other challenges last year. So we pick up from there. So the last plan that we submitted was 2018, and then the next plan is a three-year plan that will be submitted in July. So we have some time to have conversation. We have some opportunities to, you know, highlight some things that we might want to include in terms of our goals. And then the scope of this particular plan is focused on the instructional impact and learning outcomes for students. So we know technology plays a large role, probably impacts a lot of different facets of the organization. But this particular process is to see how we can support teachers in the instruction and give students an opportunity to learn technology. So that's kind of the scope of this. And again, as the state has the requirements for specific charge areas that they've identified, and again, I included the website on the presentation. So you can dive deeper if you're curious to see all the requirements that the state has. We wanted to make sure that we were aligned with the learning commitment throughout the district as well. You know, we have local goals that sometimes are either broader or more specific than what the state asked us to do. So so we start from there and kind of, you know, unpack from there to a final outcome in terms of a plan. So so in general, we want to make sure that we're creating engaging and relevant learning environments for all our students, regardless if they're using technology or not. But there's a fundamental belief or at least a consensus among our educators that that technology could play a role in terms of that teachable moment, opportunity maybe to explain things more visually or in some different formats than perhaps other ways without technology. So with that, we feel the technology could increase teachable moments, which then yields engagement within the learning environment. And then if that happens, then if students are more engaged, does that then provide a deeper learning model that allows students to learn both inside and outside the classroom now that they've developed the technology skills to pursue their interests? So that's kind of summarized this kind of our fundamental belief in the district that the learning commitment is our anchor and we're finding the right resources to accelerate or at least move forward that model. So and then this past year, we, as a district, decided to focus on particular areas. If you were to see something similar, the last technology plan, we were probably closer to the center because we had a lot of work to do. The last technology plan focused a lot on stabilizing and providing predictability, giving us a good foundation in terms of the technology in such a way that it becomes seamless throughout the organization. And we'll talk about the successes and how we achieved those in just a little bit. But notice, we still are focusing on technology as a theme throughout the organization. It just becomes more behind other priorities this year, but it's still connected to the work that we do. So that was something we just wanted to assure that this is not something extra, but if we do a good job with the technology integration, it should support all aspects of the organization. So all right. So last technology plan yielded this technology commitment, and I'm just re-presenting it. So it kind of gives us an anchor point of where the last plan was. We might have to revisit this. This is something that it's a living document. You know, at that point in time, it had great value in terms of having common conversations, early starting points with all the stakeholders in such a way that we can all get to an agreement. And we pulled it just a couple of statements here that we felt were important statements at the time and still continue to kind of drive the work that we're doing as a technology department. And then we understand that technology is a tool. The tool provides us a lot of efficiencies in the work that we're doing, a lot of productivity in terms of being able to either eliminate certain tasks because the technology can do it for us, or it complements the work that we're doing, that it just allows us to do that. But the second part of that is if it's in the learning environment, it's a tool that could be leveraged to explore curiosity, to explore creativity, and those are essential elements that we feel is a commitment that we feel technology should play that role. So that was something that is there, and that's our pledge. Make the investments in the appropriate locations to the right environments in such a way that we can maximize that curiosity and creativity. So that's the commitment that we made when we were in the last technology plan. Of course, the technology planning in general is really just two parts. It's understanding the current state of where we are and then trying to understand a future state, you know, where do we want to be three years from now, once we complete this plan? And in some regards, I appreciate the state continuing to ask us to take a pause with all these investments in such a way that we can kind of understand the tools we have, plan for appropriate improvements, and then look for observables or outcomes in such a way that three years from now that we can kind of get there. So so in 2018, we had probably a more comprehensive approach to this, more so on my behalf because I was newer to the position. Got an opportunity to really understand the organization, get some viewpoints from a lot of different areas more formally. So we spent two, three days, I think it was, with a consultant had come in. We kind of occupied a conference room, rotated all different folks through the process of where are we now, what's working well, where are some gaps in terms of some things that we wanted to evolve to a current state? And with that, we kind of documented enough of it so that that could kind of drive the objectives for the technology over the next three years. Reflecting on that process, I think we underestimated how much the world would change at that point in time. So our goals were a little bit narrower, but because we had a good document in place and I think a common belief in all these areas that I think we're nimble enough to adjust and plan for what we did observe as challenges throughout the whole pandemic era. So so that part, I think, was beneficial for us all through there. So reconvening this past fall, we used a similar process. It wasn't as comprehensive. But we did pull out all the original documentation. What we went through, we had some feedback from our Technology Committee over two meetings. We anchored, you know, the questions to say, this is where we thought we would be. Did we achieve it? In the same regards, a lot of post and notes, as you saw on the last slide, of indicators in terms of, you know, where might the gaps still exist? And so that gave us an opportunity to kind of get to this point today where we're just kind of sharing where some of our goals have been developed and looking for some input from the board to see if we're on the right path, are we missing anything, and those types of things. We have to submit a lot of this feedback in such a way that other stakeholders will give us more feedback. I know the principals through their meetings have been giving us some insight in terms of the systems that we're using in each of the buildings. BOSI's provides a lot of services. They'll provide some input as well in terms of that. And this is, you know, one part of that whole piece so that by July, when we're required to report to the state that we have enough data to work with. So what did we find out? Last, the last technology plan, which is concluding, we achieved a fully mobile infrastructure, which at the time, we had a very narrow understanding of what that meant. At the time, if you think back, the first step in the technology plan was can we be more mobile as a professional workforce? the first step in the technology plan was can we be more mobile as professional workforce? We invested with laptops for teachers. We put it in hotspots throughout the buildings. We were hoping to take a slow, steady pace to really understand a lot of what that shift would mean for all our professionals. A year later, we accelerated that to fully immersing all our students and our community into a mobile environment. And I say community because of the fact that the plan was focused on campus model. We were just looking at our classrooms and hallways and common learning spaces. We truly did extend into the community in such a way that we were supporting families and and folks in such a way that we had mobile hotspots. We had to create opportunities to create safe learning environments for students in the community. So so all of those learning opportunities to create that infrastructure is, I think, more than we achieved in our initial thoughts. But but we're glad to be there. I think it kind of pushed us a little bit beyond it. And that's what we're using this as an assumption in terms of what our next.
And please allow me to just interject and say, thank you. I mean, this bullet alone is just, it is enormous. And really, this is our first opportunity. And it's great to see you come up for air and to be able to put together this presentation to apprise us of all that has happened since we submitted this plan and where we are now.
Yes. Please understand that I represent a much larger stakeholders group, but we have a great team. And that team consists of technicians and the network folks within the department. Our data management team led by Maureen Jones and the team there just done a great job. All our instructional leaders have come and provided so many insights to help us do a good job with that. The PTO's parents, all the spokes out there, it's been a, it's been a collective process. So.
Thank you for saying that. But again, thank you.
All right. So our things that we achieved, obviously, we built out the bandwidth to support. You know, I think our current inventory is about thirty five hundred mobile devices. Again, much larger than we were at the beginning of the plan. And we still get more demands for, can we get more bandwidth? Can we get faster speeds when you do that? So it's an ongoing process. But still, great achievements throughout the last plan. Looking at different learning platforms, this is something that we had a very intentional list to look at productivity tools and learning tools. Led by our librarians for databases and research and those types of things. Opportunities for productivity, Word, Excel, those types of things. We had intentions of allowing everybody to have those tools consistently. We've scaled that so much broader when we introduced our learning management system in terms of school G. That's given us more connectivity to a lot of other programs and ways that teachers and students can stay connected through the learning process both inside the classroom and outside the classroom. So we achieved a lot on that front and then a lot of learning along the way. That last bullet, this is a reactive piece I think was necessary to get through the pandemic. I wish we were a little bit more intentional in terms of being able to explore some other topics and some other themes. But but none the same. We had to take an opportunity to understand that there was a whole lot of adjusting and learning through this process as we go there. And through there, we achieved this through summer technology summits. We were very active in the summer months in terms of of taking a break from teaching and giving our professionals a chance to learn. We've held kind of pull in opportunities both through our model schools partnership at the Lyric as well as hiring consultants to come in and do some coaching throughout the year. We've had certification programs. A lot of our teachers and our professionals have taken online courses that were credential so that they can better understand the tools they have. And that was part independent study, but then also small groups and a lot of collaboration in terms of there. We received participation through a learning technology grant. So we're doing some research. We have an opportunity to kind of be more formalized in terms of some targeted outcomes. And then a whole lot of books. I'm really proud of a lot of our professionals in terms of asking for research and I think last year we distributed about fifteen different titles on various topics. Just gave folks a chance to do a deeper dive to kind of understand changes that are going on in our culture, but specifically within the realm of education. So so very successful outcome. I really think the hard work of all the stakeholders has yielded us in a very good position, which makes it a little bit easier for us to play on the next phase, which gives us some time to kind of talk about that tonight. Where do we want to go now that we have a lot of these things in place? So here's the next piece. We'll talk a little bit about.
Sorry.
Yeah, the one thing that so we spoke to the state having expectations for technology planning. So that's, that's the role of actually having a document or at least a list of goals and what we want to achieve over the three years. But parallel to that, there's, there were two major changes that took place. You know, since the last technology plan, there's been the appointment in every school district for data protection officer. That person happens to be myself as well. But in the same regards, expanded the responsibilities to ensure we were protecting all our resources from, you know, cybersecurity perspectives, being able to protect data and those types of things. So the infrastructure component, it continues to be held accountable to some standards in terms of what's there. But then how we use technology is also evolved in terms of standards. So the state has kind of deemed the state learning standards as focused on computer science and digital fluency standards. So that's what they have labeled it. And this is a little bit different than our digital citizenship curriculum that we established a few years ago in terms of allowing students to understand ethical uses of technology. Because it's much broader than that. So we had a good support model in terms of our students being exposed to dialogues around how we use technology. This is a deeper dive in terms of developing mastery, identifying specific skill sets that are important for each particular area and such. So I know this is kind of small font up there, but it aligns very well with the next three years from the standpoint that this was just an awareness here where we just basically put on on call from the state to say, start thinking about it. And then the next three years kind of bring us into a perspective of being more formalized in that process. So so that's something that will anchor some of our goals too, as we look at the next step. So. All right. So all that being stated, let's take a look at where our gaps are and some goals that we might be able to kind of focus on over the next three years. And actually, this started with three and then as we spoke more, it became four. As of last week, I think I presented five and now we're up to six. So come July, it'll be interesting to see in terms of what we finally agreed to. But that's good. We know technology plays many roles and there's a lot of things we need to stay focused with. But for this presentation, I want to do at least introduce, you know, the six goals that we think we should put the most focus on over the next three years and and then we'll have an opportunity to kind of ask some questions to see if maybe there are some separate or some deeper dives in some of these six. So I'll just kind of highlight a few things. For each of these goals, the state will ask us for some action steps. So assuming that these are consensus where we are, when we submit the report in July, we'll itemize. So, you know, in year one, we're hoping to achieve this in year two and stuff. So there's more complexity to each of these goals, but for tonight, we'll do some big picture type understanding of what we want to have as outcomes. So goal number one talks about equity. And equity in the previous plan probably was just do we have the tools to provide everyone an opportunity to use the tools? And again, as I shared, that was an acceleration. If we didn't have the pandemic and provided devices to everybody, that probably would have been our goal in this plan. But equity from this standpoint is more about experiences. Does every student have a pathway to have the same opportunity to develop proficiency with technology as they go through their career here? It could don't lose bro. So that's when we say equity, we want to be intentional that every student has the same experiences. Not just because they're interested in technology. It's not just because the teacher may be interested in technology that we have some opportunity to kind of work through consistent experiences as it's listed here. Goal number two is specifically developing student proficiency and what that means. There's some state standards, as I shared with you, in terms of digital fluency. We can also rely the SD standards as a national standards, which defines different roles that students can work with. But we envision this as, you know, outside this classroom expectations that students can make choices with technology to be productive and creative and create products in such a way that they can demonstrate their learning. Goal number three is to continue to expand our special development model for faculty. You know, is our learning model flexible and specific enough to meet the individual needs of all our teachers? And that that becomes an interesting paradigm shift because before it was a collective, let's learn how to, you know, understand the menu that's on a tool or something like that, right? So it's very, you know, task specific. And you could, you know, kind of approach that with just everybody going through the process together. Seeing that we have so many different perspectives and uses of technology and all the different curricular areas. This is really where our focus is, is continue to support folks now that they have basic proficiency skills with the technology to to really apply it to other lessons within their curricular area. Goal number four, that whole cybersecurity data protection. What are we doing to provide safeguards for all our students, teachers, faculty, staff members, even parent data that we collect and such? We are stewards of all those data sets and do we have the right tools and structures in place to protect it? But in the same regards, can we use that to improve unintentional exposure to content and those sorts of things? So before the standard was internet filtering. You know, state commands came in and basically said, these are the things you can't have on your network from an internet perspective. It's become a lot more complex now because we have so many different ways that companies are influencing. Whether it's ads, and I think we've talked about that at a previous board meeting, whether it's, 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 you know, things that are emailed to them. It's, it's, there's a lot of different ways the technology could be leveraged to, you know, expose kids to potential risks or opportunities for maybe ways that hackers can get into our network and and we have to be very intentional in terms of what that means for us and how we can provide safeguards there. Learning spaces. This was, this is kind of interesting. It's, as our older model was to tool spaces. We could create a computer labs. We created spaces in the back of our classrooms, rows of computers that that could be leveraged. Now that we've become fully mobile across the organization, what do we do with the extra space that is now created in our classrooms and what happens to the computer labs if they're no longer computer labs and those types of things? So so I think we'll be more intentional in terms of understanding how we can use the tools in some new ways, but then also look at the physical space there as well. And then goal number six is just, do we have a measuring stick? The previous plan, the measuring stick was, did we have it or we didn't have it, right? So I could pull out an inventory spreadsheet and say an X amount of switches, we have X amount of bandwidth. And when we're talking about using technology to achieve all these goals, do we have a measuring stick that we can, you know, help people understand what they're learning and growing with with the technology? But at the same time, how do we know we achieved it if we don't have a way to monitor it? And I think that's what we're looking to achieve in that last goal. So so some broad strokes, a lot of work to do under each of those categories in terms of specific actions. But I think the thought here, and I can open up the floor here a little bit is, you know, are we on the right track? Is this a good, good next steps for us as an organization? And then same regards to certain feedback in terms of how we might be able to, you know, tweak the plan to get us to the next step with the technology.
Thank you. It's really exciting to think that we're at a point where we can consider these six and potentially some other goals, but and I'm eager to hear from my board colleagues, but thank you for framing these out. These are thoughtful, relevant. I think you've touched a nerve in each and every one of the goals and there's much to talk about, but it's really exciting to think that we have reached a point of stabilization and mobility that would enable us to take a step back and to be able to reflect on where we want to go with respect to any one of these dimensions. So very exciting and great that we have some time to think about it between now and July. Thank you so much for bringing this to us. And I'm happy to turn it over for comments, questions, thoughts about the goals or what's being proposed for the future.
I think if I could, that goal five particularly interests me from a facilities standpoint. It's really interesting to think about the fact that computer labs are a thing of the past. I know that I sent my first email from a computer lab many, many years ago. Could you just elaborate kind of more on the, on the thinking around that?
Another slide on each one.
Yeah.
What was that goal number six? Oh, five, yes.
Yeah.
So when we look at technology as a tool and we look at specific subject areas like your math and sciences and stuff, which, which have a lot of technology embedded in their learning, do we have spaces that can provide opportunity for the applied skills, right? So that's something that might require more space. It might require a different set of accessories that go with the technology. It might require some personnel to help, you know, push in and support those activities. Currently, we're engaging kind of an application process for this summer. We're going to have a stream bootcamp where we're asking teachers to come in for three days and kind of unpack both what the state standards are for digital fluency, but and then, you know, what can we do to start re-engaging in the process of learning environments that are more engaging from a math, science, application standpoint? So it could be, you know, mini robots, it could be, it could be creating code and coding. It could be data collection systems that maybe monitor different environments differently, whether it's motion or temperature or sound and those types of adapters that are more common, commonly available for students, but perhaps maybe are out of context in terms of how it might apply to their learning. So so we're still, you know, it's a goal. We want to learn more about it. But in the same regards, I, we hear a lot from our teachers. It's like, oh, we've got so much already defined in the classroom. How can we expand and give students some opportunities to apply what they're learning in some different ways?
Chris has organized visits. We, the committee has visited a few different schools that have stream labs as well. So we're getting some ideas. I think one key is flexibility. You know, having spaces that are not just set in one way so that, you know, we talk about flexible furniture and things like that. And the importance there is these spaces can have multiple purposes and that really even across a day. You know, it depends on the purpose of the lesson and having some of those things available like, you know, I'm forgetting the names like B-bots and things like that. So, you know, students can play with them, which is harder in the classroom. At least right now. So it's interesting to think about how an active learning environment can really include the physical space and it can enhance that environment as well.
Yeah. And a few board meetings ago, I think we shared the advances that we've had in kind of the higher level classes. You know, the things that technology education program and the middle school as well as our AP classes and our engineering programs. Can we do a better job of preparing students before they get there with better foundational skills or or at least experiences to better understand those opportunities when they see in a course catalog and those types of things? So so it's more preparing at the elementary levels, but it's also giving more experiences in such a way that they can, you know, connect to their learning.
I have another question. I just want to say thank you for helping me master Schoology this year. It is an interesting platform that does seem to have connected a lot of the other pieces of technology that we use for both students and for the school teachers and administrators. I was just wondering, I think that every parent has a Schoology account. Is there, do you foresee an opportunity to kind of lean into that, you know, for delivery of information or you know, will we be consolidating other pieces of technology under there? I'm just interested in where that's going.
We experienced a bit of technology fatigue this year. I don't know. I understand, understated. It's still a lot of great use and we're not retreating from there. I think we're just taking a deep breath in terms of just understanding all the changes we went through. So you're right, we've provided all, all parents opportunities to get more connected to that learning environment. And we do have a good percentage of folks that check on a regular basis. The thing is that we used it for a very specific need through the pandemic. So it was, it was, you know, whether it was remote classes at one point or hybrid classes at another point. Teachers are now just trying to understand, okay, now that we're in a traditional environment, what does that, this tool mean for that? So we've kind of gone through the last couple of years of just kind of, you know, different understandings of what Schoology could mean. And then as you mentioned, we've expanded it to committee work. We've expanded it to teams. A lot of our teams now are starting to use. The clubs are using it for their postings and stuff. So we've grown in some other directions. And at the same time, we're looking at like, right now, we are trying to understand the grade book and some of the other features that we didn't leverage fully through the other process. So as we get a better understanding, I mean, the short answer is yes, we're going to continue to grow and bring folks into it. I just don't know if we have a fully defined plan of what that looks like yet. But that's part of the reason why we kind of put it up on there so that we can stay focused on it.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Yep.
Chris. Hey. I'm really happy to see goal six on there. I hope it wasn't an afterthought. I think measuring, being able to measure those other five goals and being able to report out on our achievement there, I think is really important. So I'm glad that I saw that there. My question really goes to digital citizenship, which I sort of think about as being both the responsible use of computers and internet as well as you know, ensuring that our students know how to filter information that they may be exposed to and to do the appropriate research so that they're not ingesting misinformation. Are we doing any training for the students in that regard? Or perhaps maybe staff development is as if not more important so that they can help their students as they go through? Is that, is that something that's on our radar?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think our library media specialists in particular have a very specific lens on that. But in addition. But in addition, you know, any teacher who has a research-based course, that's definitely a part of the conversation. But I think it becomes more complex because students are inundated with information. And some things that maybe look like a valid and reliable source may not be. And, you know, what are the things to look for? You know, there are just so many things to think about when you're, you know, thinking about the credibility of a source.
I know a lot of adults who struggle with it. And so I'm really concerned that our students, you know, are getting the right level of training, right? Because this is the world they're going to be launched into.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And, no, no, Marvel movies, you know, Spider-Man in terms of, you know, where there's power, there's great responsibility. You know, the whole, the problem with that, right? It's, it's, I, it's, it's a challenge because the, the convenience and the speed and the ease of the tool is a great asset, right? It gives us instant information. It gives us opportunity to explore things in a passionate moment in terms of what's there. So, so how do we develop reflection points, you know, pacing balance? Those are all terms that we've been working with the teachers on to kind of start to find some ways that we can do that, right? So, so we all know we have to live with the opportunities. But are there opportunities for us to help students through that whole process to say, okay? Yeah, you can look it up and find it in almost an instant second now. But, but why did you select that type? So we're asking more why questions versus the fact that things just exist, right? So, and, and that, that's a deeper learning process. And I think that's where we had started there before, we only had so much time. So we spent all the time just providing, you know, opportunities for content. Now, now the content is instant. So now we have to take it to the next level and say, okay, how do we process that content now that it's available? And that will take some time and it'll take some practice because there are some other distractions there. As much as this is a learning tool, it's an entertainment tool. So whether it's Netflix or whatever other digital tools that, that students have at home or, or they, they, they find valuable because they, they are looking for some entertainment as well. How do you differentiate that from, from learning and entertainment? And then we won't even start the conversation on social. But, but, but yeah, it's, 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 it's more complex than just the, the computer lab days where you came in, you had a specific task. You did it and then you retreated back to other learning environments. So, so it's, it's going to be a lot of work. I'm hoping that we have the right avenues for conversations. At each of our buildings, we have, as Mary said, the librarians play a large role with this. Our, our tech folks are more visible. So I know in my office, it's in the middle school, we have kids coming in all the time and asking some very challenging questions of both, why do we have this? And why, why can't we get this? And, and we have opportunities to kind of learn through all that. So, so I think being visible, having an opportunity to kind of work with adults to give us the right feedback loop of what they're observing. And then, you know, challenging kids to go deeper in their activities, I think is, you know, long-term outcome for us.
Thank you, Chris.
I have a question. Thank you. I mean, I don't know how many times I've called you over the last two years and I immediately get a response. Speaking about responsibility and accountability, I'm embarrassed that I don't know this. But do our students have the ability to text on their school devices?
There are means of doing that, yes, yes. It's, it's challenging because how they do it is, it's going to be different for different students. So it is an Apple product. If you were to put your credentials as your iPhone is into here, you, you then receive the same opportunities that you would have on your iPhone, which includes texting.
And so it's a school device. So do you, does the school have the ability to then go into those school texts in a situation where we might need to find information out?
Not easily, because most text messages are, even though you're texting through the machine, the machine isn't the server of that, right? So, so my Verizon customer, Verizon owns all the text messaging, right? If you're AT&amp;T. So, so even those are, there's a conduit to it. If the information is recent and it's, it's, has been purged on here, we could find it and probably do it. But it's, we don't own it. So it's only, you know, the breadcrumbs that might be remaining that are there. So it's, it's a very gray area when we, when we look at text messages and those types of things from the standpoint of how to gather some of that. In, in broader areas, we rely on our legal team. You know, our lawyers have done a great job in terms of being able to work with the telecom companies to define things when we need it. But, but it's not direct from the district's perspective.
This is something, you know, when we talk about digital citizenship, that our students have to be aware of that. What they put, you know, what they write down, what they type in is accessible information that they need to be held accountable. And whether they're in, whether they've stated it, or they're in a group conversation, they can equally be held responsible.
Yeah. And, and I think students are becoming more avid, you know, because there are other systems, not just text messaging. So like, for example, our internet filter, it pops up when, when, when students can't go somewhere and there's a box on the bottom. It's, you know, please, please give us some feedback if you think this has been labeled wrong. And, and they think it's just some company in California that maybe is blocking and stuff like that. So we'd get copies of the emails and stuff. And it's just many times we've had to call them down and say, you know, teach that professional, you know, language to be able to ask. And now that it's inappropriate, it's just, it's just, they don't understand that it is really being read and it impacts, you know, representation of what they're sending in and stuff like that. So lots of teachable moments there, yes.
Chris, just to, just to follow up on that for a minute, the, the texts, I understand, can be difficult to access. But in terms of the responsible use policy that students sign off on, for something like email that is stored on our server, they absolutely should know or do know. And we do have the ability to retrieve whatever's there and whatever's written. And students know that that's something that they are held accountable for. And in theory, it's the same with other things that are on our devices. It's just more difficult to get to some of the data, yeah.
Any services that we provide as like, you know, you know, but we, we have a full access to all the logs and resources. So, but anything that passes through the device, you're connecting to other resources. We, we have to do more homework on that.
Okay.
Yep.
But I'm sorry to interrupt, but technically speaking, students are prohibited from installing their text messages on their devices. Just to clarify, in our acceptable use policy, I, I think it's prohibited technically, right? So I don't know what, what, what consequences are enforced. But, but do we routinely, I mean, I don't know what the practice is about.
I believe on our next board policy meeting, I believe we have that on, on there to kind of resurface, you know, what the current policy is versus how the technology has impacted some of those changes.
Yeah.
Because it's, as things have become more interconnected, it's, it's not like they're installing a program. It's, it's like part of what is the operating system. So, so it's, it's, it's harder to disable some of those things because it's just, it just is. And so, not that we can't hold the students accountable, but in the same regards, it's, it's, it's harder to just pull it out of the system, so.
Sure. That, that makes number six all the more, all the more important to really drill down into that.
Yeah.
Complex. Sure, Ilana, please.
Thank you for all that. It's amazing to hear how much, how far you've come. We've come as sort of as a district being forced to and also have the opportunity to reflect and think about where we want to be going. To that end, I was wondering, I saw this in the last slide that didn't come up, or I guess it's there now.
Yes.
But I'm wondering if some, if some of this might come into sort of the more, the, being even more spelled out in where we'd like to go as a district in terms of the things we're teaching. And what I'm thinking about in particular is around the culture of technology usage, both for students and increasingly digital world. And what those specific things and values we might want to be teaching. I think it's sort of, it's, it's, I feel like there's hinting at it of like, technology is a tool that can augment learning. And it can be something that you learn about specifically, but it is not maybe the end-all goal of it. And that value that was articulated there that we want to use technology when it augments, but not, that doesn't become the primary learning platform. But similarly, in the usage part of it, for students, what are the things that we might want to be educating our students for? Because they're entering into a different world than the one in which we live in now and that we all grew up in. What are the things that we want to be kind of teaching about that? And how do we spell that out more specifically? And I think what Rory was talking about, the digital citizenship and what I'm hearing about is curation. And I think that that also, like, we're touching on it, but I wonder if that can also start to get spelled out a little bit more. We have these platforms that curate, we have certain information that's available to it. But how do we teach students the skills to discern what's appropriate? As well as directing towards sites that are more curated because there's such a wealth of information out there. And I just, I wonder if that might become more of a specific goal within the plan. Because I think those are, you know, what we talked about were these like, they're, they're very important goals. But I think that it's the skills to be able to use those technologies that are just as important as we go forward.
Yeah, I think actually you're really speaking beautifully to the slide that's up right now, which is sort of, you know, the aspirational nature of this, you know, what is it we're really striving to accomplish with this plan? Maybe we should put this in the beginning of our plan rather than at the end. It's sort of the foundation with the, with the technology learning commitment.
Yep.
Because I think, I think, you know, that's, I think that's critically important context for, for all of what we're really doing here.
Yeah.
The other question I just had about that, that was sort of also touched on is, as parents who have to help our children navigate and we want to kind of reinforce what's being done at school, where are there opportunities to make sure that parents have training on whatever tools are going to be used for communication or for student accessing the technology? But also for parents to learn and grow as the technology grows and as the usage policies change? And how do we, how do we make sure that we're kind of moving forward hand in hand? And not let the students just kind of on their own at school on this separate track?
Yeah. Yeah.
Something we thought a lot about, you know, in the beginning of the pandemic and Schoology was first introduced, right? We had parent sessions and, but it's a good reminder, personally, we have new students every year. And the technology changes here and there. And then, you know, with Schoology, definitely very broad use and all parents and students have accounts. But in our primary grades, if they use anything, they're probably using seesaw more often because it's more developmentally appropriate. So things like that, you know, just making sure parents are aware of the tools and have some training if they need it. And we've been, been talked about like tutorials on the website. We have some things there, but definitely should take a look at that to make sure they're updated.
So, yeah, a lot of good points. And, and I think that was a challenge to kind of focus the goals because there, there's so many elements that, that technology impacts the learning environment. And, and even if it's not up there, doesn't mean we're not addressing it. We tackle a lot of challenges that we didn't even anticipate just because it arises. And hopefully we're responsive enough to be able to, you know, pull the right stakeholders in to make those decisions. But, but, but we needed to at least have some guiding elements to say, what's, what's reasonable to expect over the next three years for us to continue the momentum that we have? Because I think we have some, some really positive momentum with a lot of the technology that we have. But, but I also want to remind the board that we, we're an organization that, that works over 13 years. And, and what works well at one level and one success that we have at a grade level may not yield any results until five years down the road. So, so, and I don't want to speak for all students, but, but, you know, I have conversations with, with high school students that had a very low-tech elementary experience and perhaps learned some non-digital strategies that work very well for them. And so, so if you were to ask them, they're like, well, yeah, it's, 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 it's nice, but it's not, not my learning mode and there. But then we, you know, when we talk about mice and trackpads with, with second graders, they kind of look at you like, but we don't, we don't use that technology anymore. It's, it's just not part of their domain, right? So, so it's, it's, it's challenging to look at us as organization, you know, as what we want. But then we have to recognize that, that the skill development over 13 years hits different populations at different times, depending on what experience that we've provided in the past. So, so it takes time for that to kind of catch up. But that, again, it's part of the complexity in terms of what we're working with.
Do you anticipate that the learning standards will address some of what you've just observed?
Oh, oh, definitely. Well, they'll put a great foundation in it, but, but it's, it's building the expectations around it, right? So, so if, if we're intentional in creating an elementary experience that yields positive uses of technology, we may not see the practical uses of that at the high school level for another five, six years. So, so, so somebody at the high school level is, well, we're putting all our attention into developing this and I'm not seeing any change. That's, that's a real reflection, but it, but it may not represent the outcomes of the work that we're doing. So, so that, those are the things that we have to continue to work with our, our teachers to be patient. We have to also recognize that not all students receive the same experiences over their career. And, and how do we, you know, be patient, but at the same time, you know, you know, get them up to where they probably will need to for their, whatever their next adventure is upon graduation. So, so that's always been the challenge with technology. That it used to be that the technology changed every 20 years. So as long as you, you had the system in place, you were confident that everybody had a common experience. And now it changes every five years. So, so you're looking at elementary, middle and high school, all being introduced to different technologies at different times. And what does that yield in terms of practices and expectations and, and those types of things? And yes, and as a parent, that's even more challenging if you have kids at all different ages, right? In terms of what they, what they're exposed to. So it's an interesting process, but, but like I said, it's, it's, it's an interesting puzzle to solve. And you just continue to ask great questions and keep charging us to do the good work and, and we'll do our best with it.
Thank you. I think Julia is waiting to ask a question or a comment, please.
It's been a long discussion. I just want to say thank you. And I was actually just recently writing about technology. And I realized this is something I would, I wrote 300 words and covered about, you know, this much of what this discussion really is. And I just even seeing tonight and just all the layers from the infrastructure that supports the building's technology itself, the hardware that's inside of our walls and, and all the way out to how children are actually using technology, both in school and in their lives. And, and the fact that it's ever-changing is really, it just makes it a really big challenge for us. And thank you for all the attention that you're giving to it. And I hope we'll have more discussions at the board level.
Great.
Thanks. Is anybody else waiting to ask a question or make a comment? Well, thank you so much.
Yes, no, no, thank you. I always appreciate the time.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Thank you. Okay, so this brings us to our second presentation of the evening and our opportunity to revisit the proposed budget yet again for the last time before we present it to our community for the annual budget vote on May 17. And it's my pleasure to invite our administrative team to walk us through the proposed budget, please.
Thanks, Marjorie.
Thank you.
So we're very conscious of the fact that our board is very, very familiar with this presentation at this point. And we imagine that some of the members of our audience at least are also very familiar with this presentation. We've given it a number of times. It's the same presentation we presented recently to our PTOs and will be again next week. Just to give context to it, New York State requires that we do what's called a budget hearing, which is tonight's presentation, one last time within two weeks of the vote itself. So that's why we're here tonight, once again, going through the same presentation. We'll move fairly deliberatively through the presentation tonight. But we, we, as always, if you have questions, please stop us and we will answer them as best we can as we go along. But we know that you've seen all these slides before. So the first slide up here is our learning commitment. Chris just spoke very eloquently to it. This guides our work, always striving to create engaging, relevant and active learning environments for our students. So this drives our work around the budget too. Moving on, we see the Board of Education's goals. The first goal there, Board of Education supports our work in, also in support of the learning commitment and always working to create increasingly inclusive environments in all aspects of the district. So we're very appreciative of that goal. As we move on to the second goal, we really get to the financial aspects and the board goal speaks to fiscal responsibility and to we're doing everything we can to bring forward a budget that is within the New York State tax cap. And indeed, the budget that we're presenting again tonight is within the New York State tax cap. And we'll speak more to that as we go on. The next slide is about the development timeline for the budget. Budgeting is really a year-round process, but this speaks to the work of this current school year that again, begins with the establishment of those board goals back in October. We do a budget conditions presentation in November, December timeframe, when we have a sense of what's happening in the world around us that might impact our budget, CPI or the, the inflation rate being a significant factor this year. And then we move into the November, December timeframe. And we work very closely with our department leaders, building leaders around the district to refine their parts of the budget. We go through a central office review process to refine the budget. And then we begin the many presentations with our board in February. We spend a full day Saturday going through every line of the budget with our board. We thank you for all the questions and the feedback that you offer us. And ultimately that resulted in the budget that the Board of Education adopted and, and is the budget that we are presenting once again this evening. Moving on, we show an enrollment slide. And as we've pointed out a number of times, our district, like many districts in our region, and in fact, around New York State, has gone through a significant population decline. We know that there are pockets of population growth in Westchester County, but by and large, decline is more the norm. The decline in our district was quite significant over about a 10-year period. In more recent years, that decline has been much shallower. And as we'll see on the next slide, where in fact, in our elementary schools, those green numbers that you see at the bottom of the column on the left, the last four years, we're seeing some growth in our elementary schools. However, we are quick to point out that that growth is not going to translate into growth in the middle school and the high school because the grade levels there are still larger grade levels being replaced by smaller grade levels coming out from the elementary school. So we're going to continue to see some decline in the So we're going to continue to see some decline in the middle school and the high school for a number of years to come. But overall relatively flat as compared to what was happening a few years ago in the district. Moving ahead, we now talk about the things that drive the, the actual putting together of the budget, the, the major components, school program, professional learning, enrollment and class size and infrastructure. And we'll go through each of those. Before we do that, and again, you've seen, you saw this image just moments ago, our learning commitment at the center of this focus and then surrounding it, works in the area of diversity, equity and inclusion, social emotional learning and sustainability, important focus areas for us. Both in terms of the teaching and learning that goes on in all of our classrooms and what we put into the budget to support this work. When the next slide, you see that we now talk about, school program and professional learning. And you see bulleted here areas that receive significant funding in next year's school budget. In some cases, a continuation of significant funding in this, in this year's budget, in some cases, an increase in funding. So the first bullet point there, learning and leadership related to race, equity and inclusion. We appreciate the financial support that will allow us to bring additional consultants into the district to work with staff and students, and to increase our learning, particularly important and relevant in light of, what we spoke about earlier this evening as we continue that work. Continued piloting of next generation science standards, science curriculum at the elementary schools. An innovation cohort, we're now in our third two-year innovation cohort. We're very proud of our staff who continue to commit, to thinking through new ways of doing their work in a very collegial environment with colleagues K-12, who then go out and share their work and their learning after that two-year process with colleagues from around the district. The next bullet point also related to our work in the area of diversity, equity and inclusion. A significant increase in funding in next year's budget to continue replenishing and refurbishing books in our classrooms and in our school libraries. Always now with an eye towards voices and experiences that are truly representative of all students in the district. So we are very pleased to have the support to make that addition. It has been important for many years and continues to be incredibly important that we have support for significant mental health needs. And increased, we put increased extracurricular opportunities there because we see those two things as intertwined. We know that when the more students are engaged and engaged in things that they love and are interested in in their schools, we know that that's good for mental health also. So it's not just about clinicians and that kind of support. It is of course about those things, but it's also about making sure we have ample opportunities for all students who want to be engaged, in many different ways in their school to be engaged. The next bullet point, challenge success and other tools that help us understand and respond to student need. Hopefully many in the, in the, in the audience and around the board table are familiar with the challenge success surveys that you've been seeing, for a couple of years, how students see them. And we want to continue working with this organization out of Stanford University, that studies the relationship between the school experience and stress in the lives of students, and how they are managing the school experience. It helps us learn about the experience how students are having it. It helps us reflect on and think about practices in our schools. So we want to continue that work, as well as think about other tools that will help us better understand and respond to student need. Then you've already heard a bit tonight about sustainability initiatives, and you'll hear more about that in this budget presentation. Continues to be very, very important to us, but to prepare our facilities and even more importantly, our students, to enter a world in which challenges and opportunities around sustainability will only get more important. Moving on to the next slide now, we speak about some of the positions in the new budget, new positions that we are very excited about. The first one being a new assistant superintendent for student support services. We have seen growth over a number of years in the area of special education, as well as in RTI services. And most recently, we've seen significant growth, as have many districts around us, in the needs of students who are learning English as a new language or ENL. So as those needs have grown over a number of years, as the intensity of that work has grown, the opportunity to add this district level position allows us to think not just separately, about how to support these students, but how to integrate the support for these students into the work of the entire district. And when we think about inclusion, we want to be thinking about all of our students as included into the core of Katona Lewisboro, into learning and working together. And so we want to be learning and working and thinking together as leaders in the district, about how best to do this work. So we're very excited at this opportunity to bring on this new position. And we think it will lead not just to better services for the approximately one-third of our students who were touched, by those three categories that I named a moment ago. But in fact, we think it'll lead to better services for all students in the district over time. Underneath that, you see continued support for expanded curriculum leader positions, K-12. Those are teacher leader positions. Teacher leadership is really important in the work of moving, teaching and learning forward in any school district. Teachers lead change. They put in a great deal of time and effort. We revamped and revised some of those positions this year. We incorporated for the first time equity and social emotional learning into those leadership positions, as well as the more traditional math, English, science, et cetera type of positions. So that's what we mean when we say expanded. And we're very pleased to have continued support for those positions. At our, at John Jay Middle School, this year we have 1.5, one and a half nurses. And through the pandemic, it won't surprise anyone to learn that maintaining the part-time position, proved to be very, very difficult with the demand for nurses in the world around us. It was hard to maintain a part-time position. And frankly, given the needs, was very hard for a person to do all the work they needed to do out of a part-time position. So we're really thrilled again to have the support there to increase that, so that we will have two full-time nursing positions at John Jay Middle School, which matches the two positions that we have at John Jay High School. Additionally there, the increase of a part-time school resource officer position to a full-time position. While that person is primarily housed here at John Jay High School with a full-time position, the person will also, support all of the schools in the district, become a familiar face at all the schools in the district, and be, have opportunity to be engaged with students and staff at all schools. So we're pleased to be able to support that. And then just at the bottom there, we mentioned, and there's going to be more about this later on, additional teaching and other positions that will come up in just a few moments. Moving to the next slide, enrollment and class size are significant drivers of every and any school budget. Continues to be incredibly important to us to have staffing that supports favorable class sizes. We are very pleased to have that in this budget. And the four contingency positions are essentially that's money that's in the budget, not initially defined for particular positions, but available to the administration should the need arise. So if we see a spike in enrollment at a particular grade level, or if our high school students make some unexpected choices in elective areas, and we want to make sure that they can have the courses that they need, then these contingency positions allow us to put staffing where we need it. So we really appreciate that support. Moving on to the last core area of infrastructure. I'm actually going to start down at the bottom here because we just have so much excitement around this. So proposition number two, and we'll say more about this later. When, when the voters go to vote on May 17th, they will see two propositions. Prop number one is for next year's budget itself. Prop number two is about a host of transportation vehicles. We're always careful to say, we're not asking for new or additional funds to support proposition number two. The money for that proposition comes out of this year's budget, out of remaining funds at the end of the school year that we are allowed with voter permission, to transfer and make these purchases. And we are very excited to be able to include our first full-size electric bus, in this proposition. I'm, I would imagine many have read about the legislation coming out of Albany, that in time is going to require school districts to convert entirely to electric fleets of buses. We see that as, as exciting and promising and daunting, quite frankly, because the cost, and just the, and just the overhaul of making that kind of transition. So we are excited to be able to begin to get ahead of it and to begin learning about what the experience will be like. Our, our district is, is, is uniquely large and has some unique terrain. And those things, you know, there's, there's, no one has yet had an electric school bus long enough to really know what the long-term experience is like. So we will, assuming that the, the budget passes and we're able to make this purchase, we will be trying this bus out on all the routes in the district on a rotational basis, so that we get a sense of how it functions on all those different routes. And also so that as many students as possible get to have the experience, of both learning from and experiencing what it's like to ride on this electric bus. So very excited about that. And then moving back up to the top, included in next year's budget is necessary charging infrastructure to support that electric bus. Flexible furniture for classrooms, which is in line with some of the work that Chris was talking about a minute ago, in terms of new and more innovative classroom spaces. And then maybe some more traditional infrastructure type work, corridor flooring replacements. You see bathroom upgrades around the district there, as well as important water supply upgrades. That's particularly true at Meadow Pond, as well as at John Jay Middle School, where we need to do some upgrades to our water supply system. So support for all of those things are in next year's budget. And that leads us to the summary slide that shows the current year budget of $113.2 million. Is proposed to increase next year to $115.7 million. That's a $2.5 million increase, or an increase of 2.24% in the budget itself. We're quick to point out that in terms of the tax levy, we are well below the New York State tax levy limit. We're going to show that on the next slide and why, and how and why that is. So on the next slide, you see, once again, that same $2.5 million increase in the budget. But in the next box there, you see that thanks to a significant increase in state aid for next year, that, that quite honestly, all districts in New York State are experiencing, but that allows us to offset, the taxpayer contribution so that the tax levy increase for next year is just 1.25%. So we feel that the benefits included in next year's budget for students and the experiences that they will have, are really terrific in light of a 1.25% tax levy increase. As we move forward now, we're going to talk about enrollment, very, very important factor and a driver of, of school budgets to a large degree. Starting with kindergarten next year, you're seeing very consistent numbers there next year. This is district-wide kindergarten. We pull it out rather than showing it at each school because it's, is the hardest number to project. And over time, we have found that we can project a little bit more accurately if we do it for all three elementary schools, rather than trying to do it separately at each one. So currently we're projecting very similar numbers and the same number of sections in kindergarten next year as we are this year. Moving on to the elementary schools, we first see Increase Miller, our largest school in terms of enrollment. And what you see there, if you look at the column most to the right-hand side, are the average class sizes. We consider those to be very favorable class sizes at all grade levels. Include, including at the bottom, you see the two sections of the SC stands for the self-contained classes that are at Increase Miller. And you, if you look on the, we always encourage people to look on the diagonal. So this year's first grade of four sections moves to next year's second grade of four sections. And that's true all the way down the grade levels for Increase Miller, the same number of sections moving ahead for the following year. Moving on to Katona, you do see one difference here. If you look at the bottom, you'll see, 16 sections this year and just 15 sections next year. And where the change is, is if you look at second grade this year and you see four sections, and then you look at third grade next year, you see three sections. The reason for the change is that there is a change as we move from second grade into third grade, in respect with, to our, what we call our goal and our range numbers for class size. So in kindergarten through second grade, our goal is 20 students, our range is 25 students. When we move to third grade, the goal becomes 25 and the range becomes 28. As you move into fourth and fifth grade, the goal is 25 and the range is 30. So we, that number of 24 at third grade, next year at Katona is still below that goal of now 25 in third grade. So we feel comfortable with that number, even though it's larger than the same students are experiencing this year in second grade. We will continue to monitor it. And this is where those contingency positions can prove to be very helpful to us. So if there's a spike there and we become concerned about class size, we have funding available to allocate a position should it become necessary. Moving on to Meadow Pond, and you will see, I think, one number there will likely jump out at the audience, and that's the number in fourth grade. And again, I'll remind that the goal and range in fourth grade is 25 to 30. So even though that 26.5 number is larger, in part you see, you can see that, the, our demographer is projecting an increase of two from this year's third grade to next year's fourth grade. So we're going to watch that closely. And again, if we become concerned about the size of those classes, we have contingency available should we need to put it there. But you can see at the bottom that overall the sections are the same at Meadow Pond next year as they are this year, 14 to 14. Moving on, we go to the middle school and then the high school after that. And we always say at middle school and high school, where those class sizes at the elementary school are in fact, will be quite reflective of the actual class sizes next year. When it comes to middle and high school, the numbers you see on the screen now are much more averages, and, and less likely to be the actual numbers in class sizes. And that's because in middle school and high school, students start to choose electives. Some students go to French and some students go to Spanish and some students go to orchestra and some students go to band. And as a result, class sizes are going to vary, depending on choices that they make. But these are the average numbers. And we are comfortable with the average numbers and they are still well within those goal and range numbers. What you can see here on the slide is that next year's sixth grade is quite a bit smaller than this year's sixth grade, as overall the school is a smaller two. And as a result, and when you look at the sections, you can see that we're reducing the sections from 10 to eight in sixth grade. And then also increasing the sections from eight to 10 in seventh grade because of the growth in that grade. So we do continue to try to match the sections to the enrollment. And you see there down at the bottom, the self-contained class, the single section of self-contained class at John Jay Middle School also. Moving to the high school again, really these numbers are average. Our high school students would tell us that their classes really can range, quite a bit from classes that can have 28 students, 29 students in them, the classes that could be as small as 16, 17 students. So a big range, but the averages are what you see projected there on the screen for the core subject areas. Again, you see overall, the high school is declining in enrollment from 980 to about 920 next year. And over to the right there, you see also the single self-contained special class that we maintain at John Jay High School. And you can see the enrollment is pretty steady in that class from this year to next year. And that takes us through enrollments. And now we're going to talk about staffing and I will turn over Neil.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, no, thank you, Andrew, very much. And on the first slide, and as Andrew mentioned, we're very excited to propose, the additional FTE, full-time employee of assistant superintendent for student support services. And as Andrew mentioned, that has a lot to do with the growing and evolving needs of that department, as well as ENL and RTI. The next two slides have to do with some staffing changes in our, for our teaching staff. And here, just a real quick note, that as Andrew mentioned, there are four contingency positions that allow us to remain nimble, to situations with enrollment at each of our schools in the coming months. So that you don't see them included in these numbers here, they're included within the budget. So as Andrew said, thank you for, for thinking about that. On the first line there for elementary, as Andrew pointed out, it had really driven by student enrollment, by grade and by school. And in parentheses there is a budget to budget reduction of 1.0. And for middle school grade six, and I think if you had, if you saw the previous couple of slides back about the, incoming projected grade six is a lot less students and therefore is a reduction of, not necessarily two teachers, but two sections. Fortunately, we don't have to reduce the number of teachers just to do it the sections in each of those grades. For the rest of the lines there, it really has to do again with driven by enrollment and numbers, and a lot of the collaboration that goes on between the middle school and, and high school administration, based on their needs at each of their schools. We're also really excited to propose three new special education positions, that one would go to, in their, in theory, to each of our elementary schools. And we hope that those positions will drive a more, continue a more inclusive model and consultant teacher services. Speech and language and reading RTI and increases there, and as well as increases in ENL. For our support staff, we anticipate the need of another teaching assistant driven by our needs in special education. Andrew mentioned the increase at the, for the middle school nurse to go from one, 1.5 nurses to a total of two nurses. So the increase there is from 1.5 nurses to two. Clerical, we anticipate the need for an additional clerical staff due to the new position for the assistant superintendent. Operations and maintenance, the point two five there is to better balance staffing at the middle school, which will allow a little more, a little more ease when there's staffing needed for evenings, for evening events as well as weekends. And for the summary, you see there a total change, addition of proposed, proposed addition of administration. Uh and for the summary, you see there a total uh change addition of uh proposed, proposed addition of administration of uh one point O. Teaching a total of four point two zero, support staff at two point seven five, leading to the uh a total of seven point nine. And I think I hand it over to Danell.
Thanks, Neil. So the next few slides will go over a few of the numbers that you'll see throughout the budget. Um as Andrew mentioned before, we are uh seeing a two point five million dollar increase from our current one hundred and thirteen point two million dollar budget to one hundred and fifteen million, seven seventy eight, nine ninety. That is a two point two four percent increase, but again, it is a one point two five uh increase uh to our levy, which we will see this history on this next slide. So this next slide shows um a number years back of our budget history. And it's always um interesting for me to see um the average of the budget changes and the average of the tax levy changes throughout these uh these uh figures on the slide. So of all the figures on the slide, we are still showing um the years reflected only a point nine percent budget to budget change. And our tax levy change is a point seven two percent. And on the bottom of the screen, that's where you can see um our budget to budget increase is two point two four percent. And our tax levy increase from prior years, one point two five percent increase. Um speaking of tax levy, uh New York State does um require us to have what's called a tax cap calculation. Um there are several factors involved in the tax cap calculation. Um in the beginning and inception, um people associated with a two percent uh tax cap. In fact, it's two percent or C P I, whichever is lower. And as we saw this year, two percent was what, uh the, excuse me, the consumer price index was well over two percent. So we worked out that the two percent in our calculation. Another factor in our tax cap calculation is our assessment growth factor. And on this next two slides, you'll see this calculation. This is the calculation that New York State sends over. Uh we take our prior year tax levy and uh we multiply that by the tax growth base factor. This is actually our brick and mortar um uh advances in our assessed values. That gets us at a base value. Um we are allowed to take out some exemptions for our debt service in this calculation. So we reduce that and then we uh multiply it by that allowable tax uh allowable growth factor of two percent. We carry that over to this next slide. And then we have to add back in those exemptions, but at the twenty two, twenty three exemption rate. And overall, that gets us a tax levy limit with exclusions of a hundred and two million, one fifteen, two twenty six or approximately two point four million dollars higher than our current tax levy. Uh we are not proposing to go near that two point four million dollars. In fact, uh the budget that we're presenting to you is uh one point one, six, six, oh, three, six, lower than the tax levy limit. And ultimately, what that means is we're required to do um a simple majority, which is a fifty percent plus one vote to pass the budget. Um had the school board decided to go to what's called a super majority, we would be be required to have a sixty percent um voter approval for that. And our next slide, you can see um along with our uh taxes, we do have other sources of revenue. Um the second highest source of revenue is our sale, uh excuse me, is our state taxes. Um these, the state has projections of what our state taxes will be, and we use that in the calculation. In this slide, you'll see that um we start off with our total budget and we use other uh revenue sources. We subtract that out. Uh we do uh plan to use some appropriated fund balance um and reserves. Reserves are essentially our savings accounts that are heavily restricted uh by the state on what we can use them for. So we plan to use a three point two million dollars of those funds. And then that gets us to the amount that we need to raise by a tax levy. Uh prior year was ninety nine million, seven hundred, three ninety four, and what we're presenting in twenty two, twenty three is a hundred million, nine forty nine, one ninety. Our next um s- slide will talk about our tax rate. What's important to know about the tax rate is in July, our um, it's not advancing. Let's see if I can get this advanced. The board does um does not set the tax rate until July. Um after uh the uh the budget is passed. Um at that time, uh we do do go back to our assessors and find out the assessed values and calculate the tax rates. So this slide is a moment in time. And it's your tax rate per one thousand, what your assessed value will be um calculated on. So the these numbers will change. Um they change um on a monthly basis when we uh touch base with our assessor's office. And they will change slightly from now until July. So we will continue to monitor those.
Now, can I, can I butt in there for a moment and just try and say this in my layperson language and have you correct me if I'm wrong, because I always worry that people look at these numbers and they see a negative number and they think, oh, my taxes are going to go down? Or they see a positive number and they think, oh, no, my taxes are going to go up. As I understand it, what this means is that the assessor is balancing or the assessor of a town is determining the total assessed value of the property. And usually in one of our communities, the total assessed value will go up. And as a result, the tax rate may go down a little bit there. And it may be vice versa in the other community, but doesn't necessarily mean that my own personal taxes are going to go up or down. They may stay just the same.
Right, right. So it it's dependent on your assessed value of your hat, of your property.
Right.
And then they multiply that um by the tax rate. So this is the tax rate. And that's that number on your tax bill that uh goes out several digits long. So it's it's, this doesn't reflect that Bedford will see a reduction of three point two two percent. It's just a reduction of three point two two percent in that tax rate.
Thank you.
I hope that clarifies. And thank you for clarifying that.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure I did. I'm trying.
I I guess ultimately, the important thing to to remember is that's a moment in time. It does change periodically and it ended July, we will um, we will set the tax rate and the assessors will bill accordingly.
Right.
I think if I could just add one thing to that, I think, I think what we're talking about is that we collect our levy from four municipalities. And year to year, the percentage of the levy allocated to or from a particular municipality might fluctuate somewhat based on the assessed values and sort of that municipality's share of the levy, if you will. And this is sort of the first piece of that puzzle, and then it evolves over time. And then we actually set these rates in consultation with the assessor in the summer.
Correct, yes.
Thank you, Danell.
Thanks. And I'm going to turn this back over to you now.
Thank you. So this is a summary slide, which in essence says that we are very excited about this proposed budget. Uh we think it contains, as I said earlier, many, many new benefits and continuation of existing benefits for students throughout the district. Uh we're excited about some of the enhancements and the changes in this. Uh it it certainly continues our commitment to our learning commitment, uh continues our commitment to uh social emotional learning as well as diversity, equity, inclusion, as well as sustainability. Uh there are new positions in the budget that we think will enhance the services that students receive. Uh and we think it is a fiscally responsible budget in the way that our board asks us to present it. So we're excited about all of that. On the next two slides, you see the propositions themselves as they will be written on the ballot. Uh when you go to vote on May seventeenth, the first proposition being the one uh that authorizes the district to levy the taxes that we need to fund the budget. Uh that hundred and fifteen million dollar budget. And the next proposition, as I mentioned earlier, is the transportation budget. Uh it's very important to us to continue to maintain safe vehicles on our roads. They do uh many, many hundreds of thousands of miles every school year. They're inspected twice a year by Department of Transportation, and that's our guide to know when a bus is beginning to reach the end of its safe and useful life on the road. So we do have this replacement cycle. And as I mentioned earlier, we're very excited to be replacing one of the traditional buses with an electric school bus uh for next school year. And I will say, even though the upfront cost of that electric bus is significantly higher than a traditional school bus, uh there, there is quite a bit of thinking uh around that over time the cost may not be as substantially different for an electric bus. It's still somewhat unknown because no one has had these buses for so long, but with the cost of electricity potentially. And I have to say that because the cost of electricity is fluctuating quite a bit these days, but potentially being lower than the cost of gas. And with the maintenance of an electric vehicle uh anticipated to be less than the maintenance of a traditional vehicle. It's possible that over time, those upfront costs may level off to some extent with a, with a traditional bus, but that's something we'll have to wait to see.
Last longer like.
I don't, I don't know, because um I I truly don't know. With 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 buses, it tends to be rust uh that takes them off the road before anything else. So we're not sure if they'll have longer life or not. We certainly hope that that they might. Uh but there's, there's a lot of learning to happen with those buses, which again is why we're excited uh to be able to put one into our fleet. Moving ahead, uh you see the dates here as the uh the process that unfolded and all the dates that have been checked off already. Uh and tonight, we're at the public hearing and May seventeenth is when we encourage our entire community uh to go out to vote from six A M. until nine P M. at our three elementary schools. The next slide I mentioned earlier, the uh our great appreciation to all of our P T Os. Uh we are to at the end now of the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday uh of the first week and next Tuesday and Wednesday. Uh evenings next week, we have our special education P T O budget presentation as well as our Katona L M H school. And we always say that uh these presentations are the very same presentation that you saw tonight. But it's an opportunity to be in person with folks, to answer questions that they might have. And anybody is welcome to come uh and join us and hear the same presentation that you heard tonight, uh if you're so inclined. So last slide again is the date of the budget vote itself uh as well as our Board of Education election. And I think that might lead us into the next agenda item. Thanks, Danell and Neil. Thank you both.
Thank you. We really appreciate your run through of the budget at a high level yet again. We really appreciate the opportunity that we had on that Saturday back in February to go through a line by line analysis um of each budget item. And we thank you not only for a budget that so um thoughtfully reflects the evolving needs of our students, but also a budget that reflects the collaborative leadership style that you have brought to Katona Lewisboro and the dedication of our building leaders who were integrally involved and also who were with us on that Saturday in February. And our staff who know our students well and are able to help you envision what we need to best serve them. So we, we really thank you for all of the above. I'm happy to pause. I'm not sure whether board members might have a question or two remaining or whether any additional thoughts um occurred. If not, I did just want to underscore a couple of things that we heard tonight. If you don't mind, just briefly with regard to the enrollment slide, this is slide numbers. Um if we can look at slide number seven just for a minute. I mean, I do think this came up in another one of our conversations. We were talking about the data that is provided to us on a weekly basis at this time of year from Westchester Putnam County School Board Association. Just to really underscore that um a general decline in enrollment has been pervasive in New York State and in this region for quite some time. I think we have a slide with a bar graph there that actually shows an uptick in our elementary enrollment. And I did take the time to go back to some of that data just to be a little bit more um concrete about the trend that that is occurring and and sort of where we are as a school district. Um and just to note that, you know, there are about forty six districts in the county of the forty six, approximately thirty districts had reported their anticipated change in what we call beds data, which is enrollment data. So seventeen of the thirty had sizable enrollment declines that were significantly greater than ours, actually. And I'm not going to go through and name them because I don't think we really want to do that to our peer districts. But rest assured, you know, these are our, our close neighbors, our high-performing school district colleagues and families. Um and they too are experiencing, you know, somewhere from a a small to a sizable decline. Only seven reported anything in the neighborhood of an uptick. Um some, you know, as little as sixteen students and then, you know, we have a couple of districts that are reporting an uptick in the neighborhood of three hundred some odd students. And I would just caution there that that really creates significant challenges in a tax cap environment. So actually, we're quite fortunate that our enrollment is generally plateauing at this moment and having that small uptick in elementary where, you know, we have wonderful elementary schools and staffs to accommodate students. You know, we're in, we're in very good shape in the region. Um I also just wanted to um revisit slide number thirty one, which is where we show our history with regard to the tax levy and the tax uh budget to budget increase, pardon me. Just to there provide again some context in the region, which is to say that both the proposed budget to budget increase in the vicinity of two point two four percent and the anticipated levy increase, which is on the next slide, one point two five percent. I know the clicker is really hard, but sorry, I I'm saying the numbers as best I can. Both of these numbers are well within the bottom quartile that we're seeing for increases in the region. So when we say, you know, we really feel this is a fiscally responsible budget, which is the part I didn't say at the beginning when we were thanking you for the terrific budget that represents the needs of our students. It also really is a fiscally responsible budget. Again, with an increased budget to budget anticipated to be well within the bottom quartile of the region. And that anticipated levy increase of one point two five percent is quite modest when you look out across the region. So we really thank you for sharpening your pencils and bringing us uh an excellent budget. Thank you.
Right. Can I just say one other thing? It just occurs to me in case anyone's wondering why we're not getting questions tonight that might cause us to go change something in the budget. It's too late for that. Tonight is the budget hearing. Uh the budget has been published. It's out available for community to see. And we can't make changes at this point. So while we appreciate uh any feedback and questions at this point, the board's budget is what it is, uh and this is the budget that the committee will be voting on on the seventeenth.
Thank you.
Sure.
And with that, I do think we're ready to move forward to our next agenda item, which are our eagerly anticipated statements from our candidates. Thank you so very much to all of the candidates for joining us. I will just briefly mention for community members who might also be waiting to speak with us in public comment that we are going to turn our attention to public comment right after the candidate's statement. So if you haven't had an opportunity, you're welcome to sign up for public comment. There's a laptop in the back near the circulation desk. And you know, please feel free to make your way there at your convenience. And as we are getting ready to invite our candidates to share their thoughts with us. Again, I think candidates are reminded to please introduce themselves and speak with us for approximately three minutes. And I believe we are set to go in alphabetical order. So it's my pleasure to introduce Mark Abrams, please, and invite him to the podium.
Good evening. I'm Mark Abrams. I would like to share a little bit about who I am as a person. I was inspired to a life of helping others as a child. I often walk with my father, a physician in our neighborhood, as he made house calls. Watching him work and hearing the praise from grateful patients and their families was awe inspiring. I've worked hard throughout my education and career to fulfill my calling. As a psychologist, I have dedicated my adult life to helping people who are genuinely suffering and need the help, support, guidance, and inspiration to find the courage to pick themselves up and thrive. I have literally made a positive impact on thousands of children, teens, and adults. I woke up this morning to an email from the parent of a teenage boy whom I worked with for several months, for three months. The parent wrote, I am so grateful and want you to know he is really doing so well. Thank you so much for the work you've done with him. Some of you who do not know me can be intimidated by my passionate approach to life. But those who do know me know that I love a vigorous debate and can openly agree to disagree while genuinely respecting and caring for that other person. My friends, neighbors, and family know that if I can be of assistance regardless of the time of day, I'm on my way to help. I routinely work well with people from different countries and cultures. We all inspire and push each other to achieve the goals we set for ourselves and look to go beyond what we believe is possible. This board is comprised of dedicated, caring people who have volunteered countless hours in their genuine desire to make our school district great. They deserve praise and thanks for all their hard work. My stern words and demeanor at board meetings is because I truly believe that this board can move beyond its self-imposed confines in order to better serve our community. There we go. In order for this transformation to occur, I believe we need three new passionate, deeply committed and caring people on this board. They are myself, Matthew Goglia, and Erica Glick. The changes we seek are not to be feared as someone like you to believe, but to be embraced as a real step forward toward greater transparency, compassion, and accountability. Some of us, some have tried to paint us as angry people who are difficult to work with. In fact, because of our efforts, our school district changed its restraint policy, but we did not stop there. Yesterday, Assemblyman Chris Burdick presented a bill that would change the restraint restraint policy throughout our state. It passed the assembly unanimously. This initiative was spearheaded by a member of our group, Alexandra Stack. We've proven that we can work well with others and we can create positive, meaningful change. If I'm elected to this board, I will look at every child in this district as my own, every tax dollar spent as my own. I will work with every board member, administrator, community member, and anyone else for that matter collaboratively as we push ourselves to always do better. I want us to strive to look beyond what we currently view as limitations to what this board can and cannot do. I want us to not only revision how we operate as a board, but operationalize that in a manner that pushes the bar forward as we continue to work in our school district to make it the best place to receive a great cost effect effective education for all students in a safe, humane and inclusive environment.
Thank you.
I one more sentence. I want us, I want to earn the respect and trust of our communities that we have through what we do, not through words and promises. I hope I can count on your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Now it's my pleasure to introduce Rory Burke, please.
Good evening and thank you to the board, Superintendent Selaznik, our administration, my fellow candidates for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Rory Burke and I'm running for a second term on the board. My wife Lisa and I moved to this community sixteen years ago, attracted by the excellent schools. We have two children, both at John Jay High School, who have been in the district since kindergarten. During my time in our community, I've been an active contributor to K L S D. I began attending Board of Ed meetings ten years ago and became a parent advocate for smaller class sizes. I later served as a community member on the finance committee for five years. I was elected to the board in twenty nineteen and I now serve as the finance committee chair and also a member of both the sustainability and the facilities committees. I also volunteered as a youth soccer coach for many years in town. Professionally, I'm an insurance executive with a specialization in I T strategy, governance and finance. I have an MBA from NYU Stern School of Business. And I have an undergrad from Pace University. In my spare time, I'm an avid ice hockey fan, cool Rangers, a beekeeper, an Irish language speaker and a winemaker. I'm really proud of the work that our leadership team has accomplished. Together, over the past three years, we have moved mountains. We successfully navigated COVID. We maintained a strong educational environment. We launched several new strategic initiatives and committees. And we've passed two fiscally responsible and transparent budgets with the third responsible budget to be voted on on May seventeenth. I would like to acknowledge the commitment and dedication of our teachers, nurses and staff. Recently, many of our teachers have stepped into newly created leadership roles while others have participated in our innovation cohorts and other staff development opportunities. I think our community will agree that our teachers and nurses were the frontline heroes during COVID. And we would not have been successful without their commitment, resourcefulness and resilience. Part of a board member's role is to be connected with the community. Although it was more difficult during the pandemic, I have maintained and developed strong relationships with our community. And that has helped to guide my thinking as I collaborate with my board colleagues and the administration. So I want to thank the wide group of community members for your input and feedback over the years. It has been my privilege to serve this community, particularly during this historic time of uncertainty. It has not been easy, but it has been rewarding. Knowing that overall our students had the best possible experience that a district could provide under trying circumstances. I am humbled by the opportunity and proud to have represented all taxpayers and especially our three thousand students in good faith. The road ahead is bright and I would be grateful for your support to serve you again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now it's my pleasure to introduce Elizabeth Garrity, please.
Good evening. Um thank you to everyone here. Your support and work on behalf of K L S C over the past three years has been incredible during this really difficult time for students and for public schools. I would like to offer a special thank you to our teachers as this is teacher appreciation week as well as our nurses. I have to say though, I I think a a week seems woefully inadequate after the last couple of years we've had. So big huge thanks to both nurses and teachers. My name is Elizabeth Garrity. I've served on the K L S D school board for the last three years. I've lived in this district for almost twenty years now. I'd like to talk to you tonight about how I view my work on the Board of Education because what I can tell you is that nothing is as simple and straightforward as it might appear. We live in a wonderful community that strongly supports public education and students. We have the ability to offer so many more opportunities for our students than the vast majority of this country. We are fortunate for this and I am so grateful for the experience my own students have had in the district. I believe a lot of this is due to a culture of mutual respect, constant learning and the ability to disagree without slipping into dysfunction. Obviously, in this setting, issues come up. And during my time on the board, we have addressed them swiftly and decisively, always guided by the safety and well being of our students, teachers and staff. The best training I had for serving on the school board was learning the five whys approach to problem solving in business school. Asking first why something is the way it is. Then following up with additional inquiry is the best way to achieve real understanding, which will always lead to better decision making. The theory that one cannot genuinely get to the bottom of a problem without asking why five times. It has served me well in this role. I grew up in a family that values public service and education. Many in my family have taught school. My grandfather was the superintendent of Pontiac Michigan Schools during some times that even now, after three three years of pandemic impacted schooling, look extremely challenging and fraught. There have been many nights these past couple of years that I wish he was still with us to share his wisdom. My father, while not an educator, has a mantra that I really take into heart as well. Get the facts. I may not admit this to him, but I think he's right. You want to solve problems, you need facts. I approached this work with seriousness, curiosity and respect for all the people involved in making public education work. I believe a good public education system is an investment in our children, our community and our future. I believe an educated public is critical to public education. And I believe the best schools are those that strive for constant improvement. And I believe the best districts are as well. And I think K L S D is one of those. Before I wrap up, I also want to call attention to the fact that this is Mental Health Awareness Month. As we continue to move past this emergency phase, I'm so sorry of the pandemic, we need to remember that it will continue to impact the community and particularly students. Caring for our young people in this time will require time and effort of the entire community and a strong partnership between parents and schools. I am out of time, but I just want to say thank you all for coming tonight and hearing what we have to say. I hope to serve in good faith for another three years. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now it's my pleasure to introduce Erica Glick, please.
Good evening. My name is Erica, Erica Glick. For years now, I've sat in those seats and spoken countless times at this very podium. I've done so because I'm passionate about education, especially about literacy instruction. I hold a dual master's degree in early childhood education and students with disabilities as well as New York State teaching certifications for birth through second grade in both general and special education. I also am the owner and director of a preschool Katona Village Kids. This passion for education has not only informed my career, it's central to my personal life as well. You see, my family was forced to leave our district because our children were not receiving an appropriate education in our schools. We've had to step away from K L S D and its wonderful teachers and caring community. We had to leave because despite being intellectually capable and afforded every opportunity, they struggled to read. And they're not alone. But I didn't know that in the beginning. I spoke with the teachers, specialists and administrators and was repeatedly directed to just be more patient and trust the process. I followed their guidance. I trusted the process. But after a few years, that stopped making sense. We did everything the schools were asking of us and my children continued to struggle. This goaded me to action. I read the work of researchers. I went to conferences and met with experts. I learned how the brain processes language, how reading develops and what methodologies are most effective. All children master reading and the associated skills more readily when they're taught using a systematic, explicit and structured approach. I learned that my children weren't failing. They were being failed. But I was excited. Armed with a strong grasp of the problem, I began attending Board of Education meetings in order to share what I was learning and advocate for change. Despite hardworking teachers and administrators, this issue affects more students than just those with learning disabilities. I was startled to discover that hundreds of elementary students receive response to intervention, R T I services in reading, but with the same ineffective instruction strategies as they receive in the classrooms. I was also shocked to see that K L S D spends a significant sum each year on litigation costs, including multiple legal battles with families who are left with little choice but to send their children out of district simply for appropriate literacy instruction. Once again, I trusted the process, assuming our district would value the opportunity for input and collaboration. But I was proven wrong and that's why I'm running for a seat on the Board of Ed. After years of advocacy and dozens of meetings, I've witnessed this trend of community members feeling passed over and brushed off. This is a systemic issue and one we need to fix together by bringing new perspectives into the mix, invigorating the discussions, encouraging critical thinking over complacency and data over theories. There's already so much to celebrate in our district and so much more potential and promise. Let's continue what we do well, but be unafraid to critically reflect and examine. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And now it's my pleasure to introduce Matthew Golia.
Thank you, Marjorie. Dr. Rifkin, I regret to inform you, we are losing one seven. Okay, um my name is Matthew Golia and my vision for the Board of Education is based on transparency, accountability, responsiveness, accessibility and a willingness to change. I'd like to thank Rory, Liz and Julia for their service on the board. These are good people. We just have differing views about how the board should operate. I'd also like to thank fellow newcomers, Mark and Erica, whom I've gotten to know well and who have been fierce advocates for children in the district. They are also good people. I want to thank everybody here for running because these are very important roles which deserve competition. Competition is a good thing and we need it to remind the board or any governing body that people are watching and people care. We moved to South Salem nearly five years ago. My wife and I have two children who will be in second grade and kindergarten next year. My wife is also eighteen weeks pregnant. So I'm tight on time and not doing this as a hobby. I'm doing it because I really care. Our family is multilingual, neurodiverse and has different cultural and religious backgrounds. My son is autistic and in special education, while my daughter is neurotypical and in general education. This all makes me keenly aware of the various points of view and backgrounds our community members bring to the table and that my own is just a fraction. My family has been involved in district sponsored groups and helped create new ones. I'm a member and former executive board member of Septo. I am a co-founder of K L S D Special Education Advocacy. I am also a member of K L S D E R J C while my wife is a class parent I M E S. I recently partnered with the Lewisboro P D and other town agencies to hold an event for special education students and their families in recognition of autism acceptance month. So I have experience working collaboratively with our local governing boards and public service providers. As as we know, being a board member also means ensuring fiscal responsibility over our community's tax dollars. I'm currently the Director of Capital Markets for a three point seven billion dollar company where I'm responsible for financing strategy, debt, investments, budgeting and forecasting and hedging. I received a BA in economics from Boston University and an MBA from the University of South Carolina. We need transparency and open and healthy public discussion amongst the members of the B O E and the administration. We need to ensure that all of our children are safe. We need to provide academic excellence for our children and be able to provide an appropriate education for each child in the district. We need to champion diversity, equity and inclusion amongst the teaching staff, administration and our committees. We need to explore additional revenue sources through strengthened athletics and arts programs that make families want to come here and stay here. We need a board that properly maintains taxpayer assets and develops positive working relationships with our local governing boards. I believe if we can elect a board that functions in this manner, we'll see greater community satisfaction. Thank you.
Thank you. Now it's my pleasure to introduce Julia Hadlock.
Good evening, everyone. Uh I've been honored to serve the community as a board trustee for the past six years and strive to provide the best possible education to children in our community. I want to thank our teachers, our administration and all of our staff for everything that they've done over the last two years. It has been an unprecedented time and I think we've weathered it well. I live in South Salem with my husband Peter and our three sons, a twenty twenty one graduate of John Jay High School and two current high school students. I'd like to thank them for supporting my board service and understanding that commitment to our community is important. And it does take the time from them quite frequently. I have a Bachelor's of Science from Cornell University and a Master's of Science from Dartmouth College. I've held leadership positions in the nonprofit sector for over twenty years. And what I've learned as a leader of a mission driven organization is that a culture of continuous improvement benefits from identifying what you're doing well and striving to do more of it. It is critical to also identify where improvements can be made. But it's most effective to identify inspiring leaders within your organization and to help others to watch their work. I'm excited that Andrew has created a culture of continuous improvement in our schools. Through his staff developers and our innovation cohorts, our teachers are working together to improve the experience of our students every day. My board service doesn't begin and end with our Thursday night meetings. I take very seriously my role in the community and the importance of my connectivity. I've worked as a volunteer in many organizations. I've been the Chair of the New Families Committee. I was a PTO president. I started the science fair at Increase Miller. I've created sets for our productions. I've worked with my husband and my son at the as a volunteer at the Lewisboro South Salem Fire Department where they're both firefighters. I've worked as a leader in scouting. I've helped at baseball track, our service to veterans and our library fair. I don't think I'm as omnipresent as Michael Portnoy, but I do. But I try my very best to be present in the community as much as possible. And in this role, I hear from our community and they share things with me that I'm able to share with my board colleagues and the administration. I believe they trust me and know how much I value education and I value their children. I'm grateful for this role and I'm grateful to be able to impact my community in such a meaningful way. My family and I value education and this is the best way for me to ensure that our community has the best education possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all of the candidates for taking the time to share your thoughts with us this evening. We really appreciate that. We appreciate your perspectives and wish you all the very best uh in the upcoming election. And thank you so much to our community again for joining us and for your patience tonight. It has taken us quite some time to arrive at this moment for public forum, public comment. So we really appreciate you sticking with us. I know at least a few people have signed up. And we really are looking forward to hearing from you for those who haven't participated in a while or maybe never. Previously, I'll just mention that this is the portion of the meeting where we take seriously and enjoy the opportunity to hear from community members to listen. We won't be responding in any kind of back and forth discussion. We ask you to please introduce yourself and to let us know perhaps where in the district you live or whether you have children in our schools. Um and to please respectfully keep your comments also to approximately three minutes um and to abide by the code of conduct. And with that, it is my pleasure to welcome our first speaker and I believe that's Peter Gallagher, please.
It's uh it's very hard to follow the technology presentation, the budget and the candidates. So it's a hard act to follow. So I'm Peter Gallagher. My wife Lorraine is the president of Booster Club and I'm the vice president of the Booster Club. And we wanted to um come here and talk about J Fest for a moment. Thank you for all the comments. I I think what was the best was what Abigail said to hear what it meant to the students. And there's where the booster clubs really. And there's, the Booster Club's really excited to contribute to this and help take J-Fest and make it evolve from simply being an athletic type of event to an event that's inclusive of everybody, and we're really excited about that. There's a lot of people that make this special, but I wanted to take an opportunity to recognize what I'll call the silent heroes, which are the maintenance and custodial staff and the operations teams. We got here very early Saturday morning, and I mean, these guys were like bees all over the facility, making everything perfect for our students. It was really fabulous. We had a couple of issues at the field house with hot water. It was addressed immediately. And we have the opportunity to work with these individual individuals all year long. It really goes well beyond J-Fest, and we work with the teams on the ground every day. And this is a real cultural difference, I think, with our staff and what they do to try to make things special for the students. So as much as we're all talking about how great J-Fest is, I wanted to make sure this board knew and was aware of and takes time to celebrate those folks on our staff for what they're doing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Adrian Kenny.
Good evening. My name is Adrian Kenny, and I have two kids at John Jay. We've lived in South Salem for approximately, I think it's now 12 years, and I just wanted to take a moment to thank the Board of Ed members, Mr. Selesnik, and all of the K L S D administration, teachers, and staff for all of your dedication and hard work during these exceedingly difficult, challenging times. You have all been amazing, and I am very grateful. I am sure that the countless hours of your commitment and effort may at times feel thankless or at least unnoticed, so I just wanted to be here today to let you know that your positive work and devotion to our children is noticed and appreciated by many. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Benjamin Goldner.
My name is Benjamin Goldner. I'm the Golden's resident with three children in this district, two in Increase Miller and one in the middle school. Anyway, today, my son, a black middle schooler, came home and told me about the latest even worse racist offense. His face clearly implained, I've never seen him look so heartbroken. He then looked far away and asked, "Do I fit in here? Do I belong here?" I have no answer, really. I wish I had a better answer. This district has not been welcoming to him in particular, and it's only getting worse. Being a teenager is difficult enough without having the time and environment. It only pays lip service to his right to an inclusive, welcoming environment. I keep on hearing about compassion with perpetrators, but there's not enough compassion for the victims. I hear a lot about inclusion and adversity, this meeting included, but those are just empty words, frankly. This is not a place that properly appreciates diversity, and many minority students do not feel welcome here. And all I know is that I'm absolutely tired of the meaningless, insincere words from this school and this administration. The answer to racist institutions, however, is not to turn this school into a monitored prison, which is really what has been proposed with monitored bathrooms. It's ridiculous. The answer is to actually hold the perpetrator accountable and do it in such a way that's made crystal clear how unacceptable it is. I will further state that this administration and this board is not up to the task. This school is not a welcome place for many of our children, and it's absolutely unacceptable. You have failed them. Do the appropriate thing, but there's another even worse incident. I'm done with the inadequate response. I'm tired of the incompetence I see demonstrated over and over again by this administration. My children have every right to be in a safe environment where they feel like they belong. I do not have confidence in the school administration repeatedly, repeatedly denouncing responsibility for our children to do the hard, necessary moral things, and so they must be replaced with people who do. We've spent far too long tonight discussing morality and ethics in technology that's obsolete for the school even implements it. Let's have some actual morality and ethics in this district for once.
Thank you. Thank you. Anne Marie Galgano.
Good evening, everyone. I didn't actually expect to talk, so I'm a little all over the place. Sorry about that. I have two daughters at John Jay High School. One is a senior and, oh my gosh, only has two months of school left, and the other one is a sophomore. So first, I wanted to just offer some perspective on one of the budget items that was discussed tonight, and I wanted to discuss it after hearing the presentation, just because of a perspective I have. I'm a special education administrator at a district in Connecticut and an elementary school, and special education issues are complex and challenging, but they're also incredibly joyful. So I support the budget item of a superintendent for student support services because I do feel that we need someone who can provide a cohesive, transformative, rigorous program. I know in my own district, we lean on that person a lot. They work absolutely in tandem with the rest of the cabinet, especially the curriculum superintendent, so I would urge everyone to really kind of look into how this role can support our whole district. I do believe it will be a support for the entire district. But the real fun part of what I want to talk about is that the arts in Katona, Lewisboro are back. The last four to five weeks have been like a renaissance and a rebirth of everything that is great about the arts in this district that our kids were missing for so long. I would really like to, I know there's going to be a retirement honoring for him, but Vinnie Bell has just been the absolute best advocate for our kids, along with Amy Geiger and the rest of the staff at John Jay High School. I know I've seen many board members come to a lot of events, many members of the cabinet, so I want to thank you for supporting our kids and getting them back out there because it's a mental health issue. It's being able to do what you love and, you know, what you've been denied for so long. I've seen personally the impact it's had on my own kids, so I want to thank you all for supporting the arts. And again, I just wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Bell because he's a treasure and he's going to be missed, and I hope whoever replaces him has the same passion that he does. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Mark Abrams.
It's me again. I was not expecting to talk. I don't think it's a surprise to anybody in this country that the mental health crisis with children and teens is out of control. The, not enough providers out there, there are not enough resources out there, and everybody is scrambling to do their best. This week alone, I've had two emergency with youths that I've had to drop everything to come to the assistance. The last couple of years have been out of control. People feel disempowered. People feel scared, and not surprisingly, people get angry. For teens, when they feel disempowered, what do they do? They typically lash out. The increase in acts of hatred in our middle school are not just reflections of bigotry, but they're also reflections of the crisis that we are going through in this country. I take my hat off to the principal of the middle school and the leadership that this administration has shown and what they did today and how they handle this. I hope this is a beginning because we need to do things from K through 12 to really work to help develop communities where people really feel safe and connected and can accept differences and reject acts of hatred. So once again, even though it breaks my heart to see this act of hatred again in our district so shortly after we've seen it again, I would like to thank this administration for how they addressed it today, and I hope that this is the beginning of a change to make things a lot better for students and parents can feel more comfortable sending their kids to school.
Thank you. Hope Turbert.
Hi, good evening. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. Marjorie, Liz, it was interesting seeing you at the SEPTO election last night. I mean, you all know that I'm the parent of a child with autism in one of our self-contained classes here. I've come and spoken many times, but I just felt compelled to come up here tonight because people are hurting, and I'm so glad that today, when that incident occurred at the middle school, it was swiftly condemned, and it was strongly condemned, and I'm relieved by that and I'm glad for that. But I would like to know what the plan is going forward, how the district plans to address this incident, and what seems to be rampant issue in the middle school in particular. This should be a safe place for kids where they don't have to feel the way they're feeling right now, and I really hope that tomorrow, when these kids that are hurting come to school, that support is going to be offered to them, and that, you know, they're going to know that they're welcome here by the administration and by the teachers and by the staff and by their fellow students, because I can't even imagine how they're feeling right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Ryan.
Hi. I also was not planning on speaking. I live in South Salem. I've lived here for almost 20 years. My students have graduated or are beyond the high school age. I'm here because last year, I and two other women created Equity for All Lewisboro. And the reason for doing so is because so many families of color in this school district and the community do not feel safe in the schools, and families are afraid to speak up in fear of repercussions. We created the Juneteenth event last year. We got the town board to approve it, and it became a town-sponsored event. This year, we are trying to promote inclusion, and our concern is, when hearing Ben speak about his son, and we've heard from other parents in the community this evening as well, their children do not feel safe. There is no one in the district for them to go to in each school that they feel safe with to create a bond. They feel they can trust, that they can share if there's an issue they're having with a microaggression, a racist event like this. That support is not present right now. There's no one safe in the district for them to go to. They need to feel safe. They need that support. The district really needs to hire more diversified staff and teachers and get people from different backgrounds into the schools for these students to feel safe and to expose other cultures to our predominantly white community. And this needs to start at a very young age in kindergarten because there is less bias at age five, and the studies have shown by seven, it increases, and 10, it really starts going up. And then we hit the middle school, and now we're having this happen. So I really ask that you take a stance, and I know you're putting a lot of funds and work into it, but it is really important. Every time something happens, it's traumatizing. It really creates trauma. And Ibram X. Kendi calls a microaggression a racist abuse for a reason. It is a form of abuse. So we ask for your support for the children and families of color and this entire community to create an inclusive community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else waiting to speak? I don't believe anybody else has signed up, but please don't let that prevent you from introducing yourself, please.
Hi, Lorraine Gallagher. I've spoken to this committee many times in the past on issues I've not agreed with the board and the decisions that were made, but I really appreciate you providing this opportunity for public forum. It's really important, and so thank you for that. I have a child in the special ed program here at the school. I have a son who graduated in 2020, not a difficult time to be graduating. I have a daughter who's graduating in a couple of months, and I've got a freshman. I want to commend the special ed teachers in the school and the administrators. They have taught my child to advocate for herself and her needs. They have listened to all of our requests and our requirements and have really done a commendable job. And I've been listening to a lot of the community over the past few months, and my heart goes out to each one of you sitting around this table because, based on our conversations in the past, I know that each one of you is here to do the best for our children, and I just want to thank you for the best that you've given to my children. But thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is anybody else waiting? I think I'm going to then close the public forum. Thank you again to members of our community for speaking with us. Thank you for your patience tonight. We know it's getting late, and we really appreciate the opportunity to listen to your perspectives and to reflect on what you've shared tonight. So thank you very much to each of you. This brings us now to 11.01, which is our consent agenda. We make use of a consent agenda to take action on a variety of matters pertaining to the district in a relatively efficient manner, so I don't believe we have any items that should require separate voting. And if that's correct, then I would invite somebody to please move the consent agenda, make a motion. Thank you, Catherine, and seconded by Bill. Thank you. Did anybody have any questions or comments, concerns about the consent agenda? Okay, then if not, we can vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Terrific, 7-0. Thank you. And scrolling down now, this brings us to board dialogue and discussion. I'm not sure whether board members had any new topics. Yes?
Not a new topic. It was just something I missed in board announcements. I wanted to say that I attended the Learning Cafe. Was that earlier this week?
Yes. It was last week, Tuesday.
And thank you very much, Mary and Neil, for your emcee duties. I think that you did a very nice job. It was one of those events where I really took a lot away. The presentations were thoughtful. I have been thinking about a jagged learning profile ever since, and I just want to say thank you for creating that opportunity for dialogue and reflection, and I, you know, the other piece that really spoke to me was talking about blind spots, and I just feel like there was a lot of good work done inside me that day, and I hope that everybody else that was there really felt that, just a lot of good, important information, so I appreciate it. You were missed, Andrew.
Or not.
No, you were.
I'm very glad that Mary and Neil were there and everybody else who came. Thanks for saying those words.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up, Liz, and for so skillfully articulating what I think many of us experience and community members experience, which is professional development for community members and parents. You know, you sort of feel yourself at work and engaging in these issues, and really thank you for hosting it, and thank you to the community for coming back. We haven't been able to do this in a while. You did manage to host a Learning Cafe in the fall, so we were fortunate, and then, you know, kind of numbers picked up, and then we were able to bring people back together in the spring, and, you know, really, it has become a hallmark of your leadership style, and we really thank you and very fortunate that we were able to pull that off. So thank you, Mary and Neil, for stepping in, and thank you, Liz, for thinking to bring it up here. Any other topics, comments?
Typically, I don't try to speak to things that we heard at the podium, but I think there's some time sensitivity around something that both Cynthia and Hope said at the microphone, which is ensuring we have appropriate support in the middle school tomorrow for any students who might be feeling the repercussions. Can we confirm that we do have psychologists available tomorrow and counselors?
Yeah, we can, and Jeff Srejadwitsch and I will be speaking, and he will be speaking with his team about how best to provide those supports in the morning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ilana.
Building on those two comments about blind spots and professional development for community and parents, I also attended the Learning Cafe and love the format of being able to speak to multiple people and have able to speak to multiple people and have sort of deep dive conversations with the context that's offered for everybody. One blind spot I'm hearing, and I think Rory spoke to us a little bit, is as we send out these communications that were so timely and really, I think, spoke to what happened and clearly articulated the values of the community that these kinds of, we want to create welcoming environments and racist, anti-Semitic, whatever the thing is, is not acceptable in our community, that one place sometimes, maybe it needs to be, you know, in that way that we're, it's going to be offered, but students who are targeted by it maybe need to be, if there's a way to kind of call that out also in the communication too, so that it's not, yes, I think we want to keep, treat all our students as learners and people that have the opportunity to grow, but the people that maybe need to be centered after an incident, the people that are targeted by it, even though it may not be intentionally, but the impact of it is targeting. So how do we, as a community, that's been pointed out, that is majority, majority, majority? How do we kind of keep that in the forefront, that it's not exclusively? And it might be a blind spot, you know, and just as, as we continue to do this learning, just to kind of keep that upfront.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
I guess I just want, sorry, just to kind of add on to that, I wonder also if at some point, I know we did a diversity learning cafe a couple of years ago, but I wonder if with these incidents, if there's another topic related to this that might be an opportunity for the community to delve a little bit further into thinking about blind spots around racism, around antisemitism, or maybe, I don't have the exact topic, but perhaps it's time as we're doing this learning and it's such a focus at schools to kind of also bring the community along at the same time.
Yeah, I'll just say to that, that at our next meeting, we'll be having a presentation on our DEI work for the year and you'll be hearing about some of the work that the subgroups from the ERJC have been doing and we have subgroups there that are talking about ways to engage the community in different activities that they're thinking through to put on.
And the policy committee's just been discussing a policy that touches right upon this that we'll present next week, next meeting. And I think, looking forward to feedback on that. And the policy includes, and we did this intentionally, some clear, you know, what do we believe? What is acceptable? What is the goal? And it, apparently we have work to do and we tried to create this policy such that it will communicate to the community that we got it, we're on it, you know, we're working on it, we're doing things. And I guess, see what the reaction is to the first draft.
Thank you. We're looking forward to that. Thank you. If there's no further dialogue, then.
I do have another topic.
Please.
This is going back to the budget discussion a little bit, but also there have been some news that there in the budget in the state aid formula, there was universal pre-K funding included. I was wondering how that affects our, if we do offer, if we don't offer it, and also how that might affect our state aid allocation, but also what is the meaning of universal pre-K? Like, are we required or is it the opportunity to offer? Like, what, if you could clarify that a little?
Yeah, it's a great question. Thanks, Ilana. And I think starting with the title of it is an interesting place to begin. So the state does refer to it as a universal pre-K. There is however, no requirement and no mandate to offer pre-K to all students in a district. And the funding that the state, we certainly appreciate that the state has begun to offer funding, but in, in communities like ours and in the part of the state that we're in, the amount of aid that's available for reimbursement is nowhere close to what would be necessary to actually get a universal pre-K program up and functioning. So there are, I'm aware, well, at the moment only of one district that through a combination of state aid and grants that it's able to receive because it has needs that our district wouldn't qualify for, that is attempting to, on a very small scale, not the universal, but to implement aspects of pre-K for, for certain population of students or for potentially through a lottery system, something like that. But otherwise, I'm, I'm not hearing that many districts around us are able to take this funding to get a program off the ground just yet, but it certainly, you know, it may, you may see more of it upstate where the funding formula may be more effective. And I think you'll be, we'll begin to hear more conversation about it as time goes on.
And I, I just wanted to add to that. So when we do look at the revenue side of the budget and the state aid, certain state aid is known as expense driven aid, so that UPK is an expense driven aid. And when we, when we do get our runs from the governor and then ultimately the legislation, we look, look at those runs and where they may think that we are going to spend that money and have expense driven aid and we know in actuality that our, we would not, that is what we use in our actual budget. And this is across other state aid components as well. Sometimes we, BOCs for example, is an expense driven aid and the state looks at our expenses in the past and what we're projecting, but we may know that we're not going to spend that much and we'll adjust our state aid in our budget document to reflect that. So in this current budget, we, we didn't reflect the UPK funds because it just wasn't projected at the time of the budget making.
And I just, historically, have we ever had any sort of UPK program or explored it ever in any sort of, just to kind of price it out or interest it out, kind of?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
And then just to, do we provide any pre-K for students that are qualified for it in any way? Like in, like, I, I know that, for example, CCC in our, that's in our, within our district offers a pre-K program in which some students come from other parts of the county and see my impression was that some of them were maybe funded by their districts. I, I don't, I'm, I'm not sure. So I'm just sort of asking, like, are there other, I know in the city, for example, there are UPK programs that are not run by a school district, but by a private provider. And so that the startup costs are not the same as of district running it? And if there might be other options to explore, while like, you know, we have space, whatever, but if there, if there was interest, if there was need, if there were funding available, even not within our schools, if it might be something that would, has ever been explored or would be of interest to explore?
Yeah, again, I'm, I'm not, I'm not aware of it being explored in our district, Ilana. And, and I wouldn't be surprised, again, in the same way that there are districts that are eligible for grants based on the need in that district, that that might be what goes to support a, a private pre-K program and allows district students to, to go to that program and be funded.
Yeah.
Could be in that way.
Has the city gone to universal pre-K? Am I recalling that there is some?
No.
Or was that, that was the issue being debated?
Yes. They did. Yes.
They did.
Yeah.
I think that's what is contributing to the confusion is that this is called universal pre-K, but it isn't actually funding for universal pre-K.
I think it was part of the de Blasio administration.
I think it was.
I think it was. Yeah.
But it seems like they're doing it, at least in part, through private organizations.
Yes. Yes.
I'm sorry, through, I didn't hear that.
Private entities.
Yeah.
That New York City is doing.
Yeah. At least some of it apparently.
Yeah. I, I would just, I know we don't typically respond to, to comments and I, I actually just want to say thank you to all the folks. We had a real diversity of, of public comment tonight and we, I just want the community to know we appreciate you coming out. Of course, it's nice to hear the very positive feedback that we heard tonight and it's also very helpful to hear the constructive feedback and, and we so appreciate all of you taking the time to come out and share that. It helps us move forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, and thank you again to our community. If there isn't any further board dialogue, then I'm ready to move forward to future meetings. Item 17.01, the sustainability committee is going to meet tomorrow morning at 8:15. And Saturday, there will be a special voter registration from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM in the district office. Thank you very much, Kim, for registering new voters. Tuesday, May 17th, of course, our annual budget vote and election, the polls open at 6:00 AM and close at 9:00 PM. And hopefully most voters are receiving postcards in the mail, letting them know the elementary school at which they can vote. Wednesday, May 18th, the facilities committee is meeting again at 7:00 PM. And then the next Board of Education meeting is Thursday, May 19th at 7:30 PM here in the library, followed by a finance committee meeting Monday night, May 23rd at 7:00 PM. And hopefully I didn't miss anything. And that brings us to our opportunity to adjourn. Would somebody like to make a motion? Thank you, Rory. Seconded by Liz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you again, everybody, for joining us.
Thank you.